Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Tuesday, December 12th, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. There is a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I will come out and announce that we are headed into work session and invite the public to join us at that time. Thank you very much. Howdy, everybody. We have adjourned from executive session. The time is 6:50 PM, and we're moving into work session in the first-floor conference room, and the public is welcome to join us. Thank you. All right, the time is 6:51, 6:52 PM. We're going to move into work session. We have three agenda items tonight. There's been a request to suspend the rules and handle item B first. So Jessica? There you are. We'd like to hear about the Veterans Memorial first, if you can.
All right. We'll get right into it. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we're here this evening to provide you an update regarding the Veterans Memorial project. So tonight, I'm going to provide you just a brief overview of the last few months, what's been going on during this project over the last few months. And then I'll pass it over to the exciting portion of the evening, which is Sumit Patel with Olson Studio, to go over our proposed design concepts. And then we'll discuss next steps to hopefully get us moved forward into the next phase of this project.
I need to interrupt here.
Please do.
We are a bit, we could be very constrained for time. How long do you expect your presentation to be?
This run start to finish about 20 minutes. But we can talk really fast, because I'm about to pass it over to him.
Okay.
So the last few months of this project, on the 11th, you all provided direction on location and budget. And then on the 12th, we awarded a new design contract to Olson Studio. And then since then, Olson has been hard at work creating those additional design concepts. And so I'm going to pass it over to a much more exciting person now to go over the good stuff. All right, Sumit.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Last time, I felt like I sped through it. I do have to take over here, okay. Last time, I felt like I sped through it, but I'll go quickly, but take my time as well. So thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. We're giving you an update on where we've come to from the concept plan. When we met last, we looked at a couple different concept items, and we wanted to kind of give you an update and ask for a little bit more input in terms of direction. Design never ends, and so we are always challenging ourselves and looking at new opportunities. So the stage is set. We are looking at a new Veterans Plaza here back at Town Center Park, here behind City Hall, really playing off of the classic themes that are already there. You remember the plan? That area C is where we are introducing the new memorial, bringing people into the park, connecting the front to the back. We have walkways that cut across the existing berms. And at either end, the letter D is these monuments that will mark and honor each of these service lines, all six of them, including Space Force, which is the newest one. We leave the existing obelisk in place. And at the front of the park, letter B is where we introduce a new, larger American flag to rule people in, and that whole existing fountain gets filled up, becoming a platform for presentation of colors, public art, a band, however that can be used. But it's no longer can be used as a fountain. Letter G there is the entry sign marking the park and, of course, helping pull people in. Letter F, so we talked about, we want to honor and celebrate those that are with us and alive, but we also want to find a place to remember those that we've lost. And pulling into that existing stand of trees, we find that as a more reflective space, slightly filtering out the surrounding noise. And there we have a battle cross with boots and a rifle and a helmet and a bronze statue in the middle, to be able to reflect upon those without being disturbed by anything going on in the rest of the park, kind of creating a transition area. Of course, the way that area is used today is as a sitting and eating place at lunchtime for those coming out of the buildings all around this kind of municipal quad. And so we will extend that existing bosque further to the north there to create, to displace the tables and benches there to allow folks to be sitting in there. One of the things that we did do, I'm sorry, I skipped it, but we'll get to it. This is a concept for the monuments. We showed we had a placeholder earlier, but what we thought is this sort of classic idea of repetitive elements that you pull from existing contexts. And we took the existing obelisk that's there, scaled it down, introduced plaque, and either in bronze or net stone, marking each one of the service lines with the seal, respective seal, and the flag next to it. This is, you can recognize us as a scale-down of the obelisk. So as we look at the park as a whole, it adds to that timelessness, that classic design nature of the entire park, really maintaining the feel that it is today. As we look at the park as a whole, I'll start with the lower picture. As you're standing in the amphitheater, looking into the back, and you can see how all six service lines are presented, drawing your eye into the park towards the back, being able to connect the front to the back. As we step forward, you see the entry sign there as you're approaching from the parking lot to the north of City Hall. The large American flag draws you in, and you can see the service branches, the monuments in the back there pulling you in. And then, of course, in the upper-right representation of the battle cross amongst the trees where you can kind of sit. And we have stone benches there to kind of mimic boulders that you might see in the field to kind of sit and remember, not wanting necessarily that space to be an entirely comfortable space. That's why we're looking at more chiseled stone benches as opposed to the more traditional park benches and whatnot. So but as we looked at this, we continued to explore what other ways, what other opportunities can we represent these service lines? Obviously, going a more traditional approach, it really ties in. But how do we move this into the future? And how do we make this a little bit more dynamic and that? So the future is digital. We looked at digital displays, LED displays, that are, they're not touchscreen, but somewhat interactive. So the way we kind of conceived this is we still have the same cut-through pathways, but at either end now, there's these digital displays possibly coming up over standing. So as you're standing there looking at these panels, it's somewhat immersive. And you stand there, you pause for a minute, all of a sudden it activates. So in its inactive form, I call it screensaver, we kind of see the American flag waving across all of these displays. So if you're looking from the building, nobody's walking in front. The screensaver mode is the American flag. Now, when you walk up to any one of these displays, sensors realize that you're standing there as opposed to just walking by, and it activates. If you stand in front of the Marine monument, all of a sudden, the Mariners hymn starts playing. Motion starts to come on the display, quick 10-second, 15-second little intro to that service line, and you get introduced, this is the monument for the Marines. And as you walk up to each one, you get that intro, maybe a little music, a little video. And then the intriguing idea that we had was, as you stand there a little bit more, it actually captures your face, and then it comes to an image of a soldier saluting back to you with your face, visualizing you as that, especially for the kids, visualizing you as a future serviceman or woman. But of course, how this gets programmed and how interactive this is, is there's an unlimited number of possibilities. What I forgot to mention in the first one is, all of this would still be supplemented with a website and a QR code, where most of the active, dynamic, changing information, stories to be told, information about Capella residents, and stories about the different service lines would still be on that website. Even in this form, this is really meant for an introduction, not to be an interactive touchscreen kind of a thing. And that's important, because more people that touch it, the more chances it has of getting damaged and whatnot. So we've explored with a couple of vendors, just preliminarily outdoor-type installations like this and that. So it can handle, it can handle a certain amount, but we'd want to make sure we can protect the lower half where most people, most people can touch. But of course, design doesn't end. As we met with staff and reviewed these couple of different concepts, one idea that came up was, how can we combine the two? How can we kind of incorporate both the digital display and the timeless, timeless nature of the monuments? So we looked at keeping those mini-obelisks, and that's letter D on the bottom and on the top there, grouping them together a little bit more so that they're not individually placed, creating a little plaza space, cutting into the mound there. But then at the end, letter C is a larger display wall that combines all of the service line imagery all into one larger display wall. The thought is that this would actually be six sort of separate pieces, and screensaver mode again would show the flag all across all six. But then, as you walk up to the individual spots, each one is designated per service line, and that would be in the order Army, Marines, Navy, Air Force, Space Force, and the Coast Guard. And then, of course, the US flags would still be associated with the obelisks and like that stuff. So all of this would really just kind of add to that dramatics of moving forward. The programming of what that digital display is can be updated and changed year over year, every couple of years, over some period of time. We have multiple ways that that can be updated in both kind of digital display options. But what's unique about this, by having that wall at the center, it sort of completes a bit more of an arc with the monuments and the flags on the side, the wall in the back. It does block the view to the back, but it still invites you kind of to come further into the park. I went through that quickly to catch up on time. But I know the burning question is in terms of where are we on budget on this? We looked at general order of magnitude costs, and with concept A, we estimate that's our sort of entry point in terms of 875,000. Concept B and C are the two that incorporate the digital display. We're looking at 1.8 million on concept B, or 2 million on concept C. There's still a lot of variance that happens, especially with those, because how much content, the what level of content we produce affects how much that initial cost is. We obviously have the investment in the display and whatnot, but it's more, what drives the fluctuation there is that digital content. And keep in mind that all of this has a 20% contingency in there. So again, where we are in the design process, there's still quite a bit of detailing and decisions that have to be made to be able to figure out where that final cost is. But just wanted to kind of update you where we are on this and really get your ideas, your thoughts in terms of what you're excited behind, or which direction you'd like to see us go.
Mark?
Okay. You know, the first concept you came up with, I think, is particularly strong, and just the strength is in its simplicity and classic, kind of classic approach. I don't know if you've ever been to the Vietnam Memorial in DC? You know, it's just such a simple idea, but so strong. And I don't necessarily know that bringing in concepts of digital displays would be the right way to go, like you're doing in B and C, you know, worrying about long-term maintenance. Like you had mentioned, there's, you know, it could be QR codes which can bring you to, you know, take you to dynamic, ever-changing information, and everybody has a phone these days. So those obelisks are, you know, kind of iconic, although the fact that you replicated the, somewhat the original obelisk is kind of disturbs me, because I think that original obelisk is not particularly appealing, more than I saw than anything. So I would like for you to get with your design team, and what would you guys design for those repetitive elements that are on the ends of each one of those traversing paths? And that's all I'd say. Just, that's, I like A, that really just jumps out at me.
John?
Yeah, so thank you for the presentation. Initially, we were going to stick with, what was the initial budget? What, 350, 250,000?
Yeah, from a couple of years ago.
Right, and we knew that the cost wasn't going to go up because of COVID and so on and whatever. So it actually, what, doubled, 700,000?
No, they actually went up to 1.5 million.
No, no, no. The original cost.
Oh, the original cost, yes.
But we came back and we actually gave the budget 4.5, right? And then you came back with 800, 800?
875.
875, and then 1.8 and 2 million. Initially, when I, you know, talked about this, the idea was that I do like the fact that if you are able to put digital screens and have, and the thought was, give some project to the high school students, KCBY, doing the videos of the veterans that are currently, you know, the veterans, Capella residents, not only the history of all the armed forces, but also the veterans that might be living here. That's great to kind of pass on the history. But the fact of the matter is, we're talking about way over the limit of what we actually budgeted. And I understand you put 20% contingency, but things happen, change orders and so on, and then ongoing maintenance. I don't know what that cost is going to be. And I don't feel comfortable burdening the residents with that kind of cost over the budget that we already expanded, and the cost that we don't know going forward. That 875,000, if we're even able to incorporate some of the video imaging, that we could, again, partner with the ISD, KCBY, and have them, it's an ongoing, right? Because we're always going to have some sort of military personnel and veterans and so on. I understand we're going to have QR code, but it's quite different seeing it at that location versus going on online too. So for me, staying within the budget is great, but also if you can incorporate some of the concepts that you had, the second and maybe the third, but stay within it, within the budget that we allotted for, because I don't want to come back and say, or I don't want to come back and say, well, there's a change order, now we're at 2 million, now we're at 2.5. I want to honor the veterans, sure, at the same time, I want to make sure that we do, we were mindful of the spending and the cost. So that's where my concept, well, that's my thinking is right now.
Yeah, the challenge is, as soon as we go into that digital realm, is where that, and it's that cost jumps up. And so it's, to incorporate any aspect of that into that site situation, that's a challenge. That becomes a challenge.
So maybe then we stay with the A, and then still partner with high school KCBY and do the online with the QR code, or that might be it. But to incorporate a history, that's fine, but again, I want to be mindful about the cost moving forward.
So let me, I'm going to interject myself in front of you two. As a product designer, to design an outdoor video display like that means you're going to have to create and literally develop virtually all of the hardware for a one-time use. That's where his cost is running from. You've got software development, you've got licensing. The thing that scares me is, and Bijal, I'll give you the question, what's the warranty on the stuff? I would be hard-pressed as a manufacturer to give you more than a two-year warranty on stuff like this.
Right.
Maybe it would be higher, but probably not. And then you start looking at parts' obsolescence. I mean, this is, this is going to be some high-end video drivers. It's not going to be, you know, a TV. So I'm completely on board with you.
Yeah.
Kevin was next.
My question was, is like, what, in your research and looking at these video boards, I understand warranty and stuff, but what's a typical lifespan, you know, like on, you know, maybe one of these panels? I know you said it'd be like, let's say, you know, option B, you've got one of those panels there, what's the lifespan on one of those?
Unfortunately, I was getting a lot of vagueness in terms of, you know, promises and guarantees and that in terms of a true lifespan. One of the outfitters had recommended, and it's not a bad recommendation, it's more cost upfront to say, basically, so what, the way these are put together is individual 12-by-12 little pods that get put together. So what they had recommended was, at the front end, purchasing essentially the equivalent of one additional to be able to then change out, so that what if, of course, the manufacturers stand behind, these outdoor rated, it should handle the elements and this and that, but should.
Yeah, should it would have actually done.
Exactly. And so it's not a bad recommendation, if that's the direction we're going, to be ready to be able to change those out and extend the longevity of it. But as far as, I don't, I couldn't venture even a guess in terms of minimum. This is new territory too.
Not really.
In terms of, well, the technology's not new, but as far as me and using it this way, so I'm still learning.
I just want to follow up on my thought on this, and just, if we're looking at opinions on this, I absolutely love the idea of an interactive element, you know, because I think about who's going to come to this, you know, this, and I look at the proximity that we have to, you know, we have the elementary school right there, plus several other elementary schools close by. So if you're looking at a way to maybe help educate our younger generation, you know, about what our military service, our military does for our country, I do think that, you know, I think, feel like every kid's got a screen in front of their face anyway, so like, it's, I wonder about like, you know, is just like something like an A, is that going to be something that would captivate a younger audience on that? So it's my concern about that. But I love the interactive video elements. The $2 million price tag on like a C, for example, is hefty, but I love the idea of that. And so I think that's where, I struggle a little bit, but in the concept, I love C. I love the classic, you know, like you've got a non-digital element, Mark, like you were talking about that, classic simplicity. I really, that really spoke to me when you said that. But I do really, really appreciate the digital elements on that. So C kind of draws me a little bit more, but I understand that that's a hefty price tag.
Brianna?
I'll keep it short and sweet. I agree with Mark. I think simple is elegant, and I think there's so much that we can accomplish from the technical side with the simplicity still, and so much that we can do with something like QR codes. I worry about the price, I worry about the maintenance, I worry about weather damage, all other things, because it is external as well as lots of hands-on. And then I think there's, I think, I could be wrong, I would think Hannah would be someone who would help facilitate the content, I could be wrong, but from a communication standpoint, just in keeping up with the content of it, it might be easier to do something with a QR code. Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the one piece that you were looking at was, hey, that looks good, but what the obelisks look like can be changed, and I would agree with that. I think that, I mean, you'd have something that distinguishes it from everything else that we have out there, but I would vote for simplicity. So I like A. And thank you so much for bringing this forward and bringing us all these different thoughts and ideas.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jim?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I kind of agreed with.
Are you muted still, Jim?
No, he's not.
He's not?
No, I'm not.
Capella Zoom is muted.
Oh, that's.
I don't know if that's the issue.
Jim, write it on a piece of paper and just hold it up.
Okay, say something, Jim.
Okay, how's this?
Out. Give me a second, please.
Ash has got the bat phone over there.
Those displays would be a mix of like a billboard type of LED technology, or LED or something. Go ahead, go ahead, Jim.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
The famous phrase. Thank you so much, and thanks, Mayor. So I agree with some of the stuff that Brianna and Mark have said. On the obelisk design, the reason that there's a cut at the top of those for the main obelisk is because it acts as a sundial or a means of determining the summer solstice, right? And the cut is, when the sun hits at a particular date and time, you know, it lines up with the center part. So I don't think there's any function to it for these obelisks. So I do agree that we should try to redesign something that is more in line with the presentation we're trying to make and less in line with the obelisk structure that's already out there. And then I would, I really only would prefer the, just completely static display. I don't think we should have any, any screens or anything like that. It'd be, it'd be great, but I'm worried not just about maintenance and all like that, but I'm worried as well about vandalism. And I think we should design it in a way, like so many of these monuments have been designed, so that any kind of, you know, spray painting or like that is more easily remedied and addressed than what the screens would provide. And I like having the big item at the back that kind of frames it all. I wouldn't have any kind of a screen there, but that's not to say we couldn't have something displayed nonetheless. I wouldn't have a, any kind of a, of a screen there, but that's not to say we couldn't have something displayed nonetheless. And, you know, I like the six kind of statuettes or obelisks, whatever. I like, I like a lot of the ideas, but I like the, the big banner in back. But I just wouldn't, I'd make it as, where it's just a static design, there's no maintenance really to speak of hardly. There's nothing mechanical or electronic to go wrong. And I would, I would try to have a contemplative place that was respectful for, you know, all veterans, those that gave their all and those that have, you know, given so much and are still with us. But that at the same time is also, you know, a reasonable price or investment.
Thank you. Anybody have any? Don?
I like, I don't, I don't like B, so we can cut out.
I like. Meeting stadium.
I, I don't like B. I do like to. Like C, I like the boldness, I like the flexibility that it gives us from a programming standpoint and things like that. I like the idea of trying to go bold with this. However, saying that, clearly that is not the way the room is moving. So what I would ask is, is there something that, if we go with, back with A, in addition to changing the actual structures, but is there something we could do from a, maybe some kind of lighting element or some other kind of, I don't know, not effect, but some other, like you'll see some of these areas that have, especially at night, have some really cool lighting elements. I'm not a design guy, so I can't explain, but.
So some, something that is, is almost like a light show?
Well, I don't know about so much a light show. I'm thinking actually the Bonfire Memorial or things like that, where it has, it has just some lighting elements around the park itself that just gives it a different look at night. It certainly gives it some more character and everything. So is there, could we explore some other element like that that?
Well, we would, there would definitely be a lighting element, especially to A, but really to all three, just A from a general safety standpoint. But, but to light it up, enhance it like the flag. So there is a whole lighting component that is part of that. How, you know, with, with the way LED lights are now today, color changing and being able to program that from a static standpoint, we don't want to quite go like Christmas lights where they're constantly changing and all that kind of stuff. But, and then there's always that like show, so.
Okay, we are seven twenty, and we have one item that we do need to discuss before we go out to the floor. So.
Can I make one last?
Well, I got Bijou, then you, and then Kevin, and then Mark.
I should let him go.
Bijou, let us go there.
That, what, if I could, that's that. The second thing that I do want to bring up is with the Veterans Plaza that we're actually going to put in, I do, just think about it today. I also want to propose that the Town Center Boulevard that we have, propose changing that to Veterans Way to make it complete with the Veterans Plaza. Again, just think about it, just thought.
John had brought it up before, there's only two addresses on Town Center.
Right, there's only two addresses, right. So it's not, we have to change the entire, you know, block of other addresses. But again, if you look at Veterans Way, even in Dallas, there's only one in Dallas which really leads to nothing. But if you think about that, Veterans Way, that leads to the Veterans Plaza. I think that's really fitting and honoring the veterans as well, putting a mark on the street as well as the plaza as well. So just, if you just think about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for giving us options A, B, and C. I like all of them, it looks great. Thanks for giving us the presentation with pros and cons on all each of this. I'm also worried about the maintenance going forward with the B and C options. And so that's where my concerns are. And of course, when we do a project, most of the projects come before us, we always have a change order. And I'm expecting something will happen for this as well going forward. So I like option A going forward, and that's, I just want to make this.
Very simple. I'm kind of with Don, obviously I'm seeing the way that the winds are blowing, so A is, since we're going to land. I do like the idea of that back wall back there. Some, it's very striking. I love the way that looks over that mound right there. So I think it does draw your eye down deep into the park. So in revisions and looking back, if we could incorporate something like that, I would love to see a version of maybe A with some sort of back wall back there and seeing what that would be. And I love the idea of like maybe the dramatic lighting that Don was talking about.
And I have to agree with you two on that, because there's, there's something about that terminus at the end of the, of the view. And then the topo has kind of gone away on the first version.
Pretend I don't know what topo means.
The mound that's there now. It's kind of there right now. It, it's there in C. And when you think about those crisscrossing paths, cutting through the, that mound, I, you know, it's actually much stronger. As long as that item, the terminus at the, there at the end is not digital. A lit element, like you said, is very sharp. Got a lot to work on?
Yeah, it's a lot to work on.
Presentation of the park board?
I do not know, I'm sure, I'm assuming they did.
Yeah, so the last one we talked with Park, so we wanted y'all to see this before Park Board. Park Board, we did confirm this location, we confirmed this basic design concept with the six branches with the three and three. They did like that, and so they have not seen the reset updated concepts.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's the next spread slide, but all of them are no longer relevant, so what we'll do is just skip that slide and. And we'll find the time to bring back option A revised.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to me.
The other item that we need to handle before we go outside is item C. Ashley, this is the discussion regarding the election appointment of members, the Board of Directors of the appraisal district.
All right, so the purpose of this work session is to provide city council background information regarding the voting process for the Board of Directors for Dallas and Denton Central appraisal districts. So quickly, the property tax code is the one who lays out the process for election and appointment of members to the Boards of Directors. And Dallas and Denton CAD have completed the nomination process, and they have now submitted nominees for consideration. So included in your packet is the listing of both nominees. And I will say that typically, city council has declined to vote for boards, for the board, just simply because they didn't know any of the candidates or they didn't have, they had very little information about them. So if city council does decide to do that, I would just inform the CADs in writing that Capitol City Council has declined to vote. I have a lot more information, but I, I can, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have about the process.
Procedurally, on the agenda, if we choose to, would we make a motion second, let it die, or do we just take no action and it dies?
Take no action if it dies.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, I think we can probably handle item A, which is a discussion of the agenda item out on the, on the floor. So unless any, is there anything on the agenda that is, has a burning desire to talk about right now? Seeing none, the time is seven twenty-eight. We are adjourned from work session and will enter into regular session of the city council at seven thirty-five.
Can you hear me okay?
Check, check, check.
Can you hear me okay?
Gather, we call upon you to bless the congregation with your compassion and immeasurable love. Grant us wisdom as we are pursuing nothing else but your purpose for our lives to serve the community in the best possible way. God, recalibrate our intentions, draw us closer to yourself if we get waved from the path of righteousness while we serve your people, as you are our unwavering guide, protector, and shield. Let your peace and wisdom rain down on us. God, may we work with renewed strength and courage in your divine presence. May we open our minds so that we may receive your eternal wisdom, open our hearts so that we may receive your generous and abundant love, and open our spirits so that we may direct ourselves in your generous guidance. Om shanti, shanti, shanti.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. All right, item number six is recognition of our outgoing boards and commissions, and Ms. Owens is going to help me with that. I believe we would like any members of the boards that are here with us tonight to come forward, Ashley. So please come forward if you've previously served on one of the boards and commissions. So just as, whoa, this is very live, I apologize for that. Just as a reminder, the boards and commissions form the backbone of, of what we do as a city. They provide all the input to the city council that we act on. They're the eyes and the ears of the citizens, and they provide just an invaluable service to us. In fact, the city council couldn't function without them. So for your service, thank you very much. We really appreciate all the time and the hours that you put in, and we couldn't, we can't thank you enough. So Sandra, I'm going to read your, your certificate here. It says, this certificate appreciation is proudly presented to Sandra Johnson in sincere appreciation of your time and efforts to the library board, given this twelfth day of December of 2023. So thank you very much. And I, I must say that when I interview candidates for the library board, there are no people that are more passionate about what they do. And, and, and it is, it is, it's actually the board that is fun to interview for, so thank you very much. Erin, I'm going to go through the same thing. It says, this certificate appreciation is proudly presented to Erin Begonowitz in sincere appreciation of her time and efforts to the Smart City Board, given this twelfth day of December 2023. And the Smart Cities Board was created a few years ago in response to our 2040 plan, and it was one of the new boards that we created. And we certainly thank you for helping guide the direction of the board and, because you had basically no history to go on and had to create what you were doing. So thank you very much for your time and the efforts that you spent on the Smart Cities Board. Thank you. Thank you very much. And before we move on, I must mention that we do have council member Jim Walker, who is attending by Zoom tonight. And in a few minutes, council, our mayor pro temp, John June, will be joining us by Zoom as well. So we do have a quorum present. And moving on to item number seven is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual's speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council present. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks, many speakers shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberation from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Record Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will break in and make the request to the mayor and the city council if they would like to expend the speaker's time for an additional two minutes. Tonight, we do have, Mr. Schoff has signed up to speak. You signed up for two different items. Are you going to combine your comments into a single or?
Well, I'd like eight to two minutes, I can probably do them both in fifteen, four minutes.
Well, that, that's fine. So, Mr. Schoff? Please state your name and address for the record.
Dave Schoff, 215 West Wind Drive. Mayor, council, Mr. Land. Dave Schoff, 215 Westwind Drive. Mayor, Council, Mr. Land. I recently met with Mr. Land, City Manager, and some financial department staff members. This is about the water rates for 2024, to discuss the budget proposal for water rate billing in 2024. I'd like to share with city council some of my comments and discussion points on this topic, while understanding that the proposal, proposal will likely be approved tonight regardless. As you are all aware, I've been advocating for the past few years for certain changes in the mindset of how water and sewer service billing priorities are made. I've been presenting three objectives or goals to that end. These objectives are, one, to obtain the revenue needed to properly operate, maintain, and protect the services; two, to obtain these funds in an equitable manner; and three, to encourage or force more conservation and our responsible usage of water resources by the citizenry. In that regard, the latest budget proposal submitted to the city council is a little disappointing to me. While I am quite sure that the proposal, proposal will likely meet the first objective of obtaining the needed revenue, it only minimally addresses the other two goals. The changes recommended that apply to commercial billing do address some of the equitability concerns. However, I still contend that too much revenue is being obtained from low-end domestic customers by upfront charges not related to usage, and in the case of sewer usage, now even more. Likewise, the only solution presented that at all affects conservation is a substantial increase in the water rate for high-end users of over 25,000 gallons a month. However, this only affects a small percentage of domestic customers and probably a segment that will not be overly concerned with that increase. As such, the domestic recommendations proposed are rather simple financial rate changes that, in my opinion, could just have easily been determined by the city's staff alone without the added expenditure of outside consultants. In addition, the chart provided that compared Capel rates to other area municipalities was interesting information. Nevertheless, it should have had no value or real consideration in determining the budget needs for the city of Capel and was therefore superfluous to the study rather than possibly investigating why some cities operate at lower costs and which may have some approaches Capel could utilize. In conclusion, I will continue to advocate for more relief on these expenses for lower-end domestic customers and continue to advocate for more effective measures to encourage or force conservation of water resources by citizens of the city of Capel. There are more issues concerned here than just funding. My second topic, which was also discussed with Mr. Land and staff members, is the stormwater fee. This fee was added to the water bill about five years ago and has been increased annually. After our discussion, I decided to research why this change of revenue from a general fund source to a fee was made, and in particular, why stormwater drainage was now being defined as a quote-unquote "utility." I'd like to share with the city council what I learned. Utility means a practical use. We refer to government facilities as public utilities that provide goods or services to the general public, subject to regulations such as water, electricity, natural gas, et cetera. Note, these utilities all provide a product. However, since at least 2019, the state of Texas has allowed rainfall, aka stormwater drainage, to identify as a utility in a non-traditional sense, which does not provide any true product to individual customers. Why? Because the Texas Property Tax Reform and Transparency Act of January 1, 2020, means local governments must acquire voter approval to increase local entities' property taxes more than 3.5% from the previous year. The previous cap was 8%. According to the Hoff Consulting Group, that potential, quote, I'm quoting them, "That potential void leaves municipalities searching for other mechanisms to generate revenue. One such generator is the stormwater quote-unquote 'utility' fee, a monthly fee." They go on to state, implementing a transparent, self-sustaining stormwater utility fee is critical today as leveraging project money from a general revenue fund becomes more difficult. A stormwater utility fee is an impartial, reliable method for stormwater management independent of property taxes. Therefore, drainage improvements aren't competing with other governmental needs in the budgeting process for the limited funding resources available to cities," unquote. In short, these restrictions and changes are in response to 2019 legislative requirements that are based on false and misleading assumptions, which appear to simply be a workaround to make property tax levels look better, when in actuality, it just shifts revenue to sources that are no longer equitable. In other words, as stated above, it just makes the job of leveraging money from a general fund easier. I personally don't feel the emphasis should be on making someone's job easier at the expense of those that can least afford it. Generating revenue by assessing fees rather than measurable metrics is prone to abuse and inefficient budgeting and hinders accountability. In essence, it is nothing more than a shell game. I guess I'll just have to start tilting windmills at the state level on this particular issue going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Item number eight is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. We do have a number of consent agenda items tonight. They are 8A through 8S. Counsel, is there any item that you wish to have pulled and considered separately? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items A through S.
Seconded by Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith. All in favor?
Walker, Hina Hosa Smith, Carolyn Nevels, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is a continued public hearing. Ms. Boswell.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Item number nine is to consider approval of a zoning change request from C to PD 313 MF2 to allow 120-unit, four-story, age-restricted, 55-plus senior living apartment complex on approximately 4.4 acres located on the east side of South Beltline Road and west of Sanders Loop, approximately 660 feet south of East Beltline Road, and an amendment to the 2030 Comprehensive Master Plan for mixed-use community center to urban residential neighborhood. So, this is a two-part request. Part one is a detailed site plan for a four-story, 120 multifamily active living product on approximately 4.4 acres, with approximately three acres being developable. The second part requires a zone change, requires a change to the future land use map for mixed community center or single-family residential to urban residential neighborhood. So, this proposed 50-feet-in-height, four-story, 120-unit apartment complex is to be age-restricted to persons 55-plus. The property is L-shaped, and the building matches it with a site plan showing the L-shaped building being offset from South Beltline Road approximately 158 feet, 25 feet from Sanders Loop to the east, and 82 feet from the Dart Silver Line rail to the north. So, the building here is outlined in blue. You have the fire lane outlined in red. The gray indicates some covered parking, and the green to the south is the atmosphere easement, which is undevelopable. So, the southern portion has that atmosphere gas line easement, which runs through it and is about 100 feet at its widest point. The main entrance would be off of Beltline Road. There are several PD conditions being requested, one of them being the amount of parking to be provided on-site. The typical multifamily apartment for MF2 is required to provide two parking spaces per unit plus half a space for guest parking. So, in this case, would have been about 300. They are proposing to provide 147 spaces, which calculates to one space per unit plus one space per five units, totaling approximately 1.22 spaces per unit, which is consistent somewhat with other age-restricted properties we analyzed. Another PD condition is the allowable number of stories and density for MF2, with two stories at 22 units per acre being the maximum allowed by ordinance, and four stories, 28 units per acre being requested, which is denser than other MF properties. Because of the property constraints, parking is being provided on the northern portion of the site, with parking in the front yard being requested. They are providing covered parking for half of the site, which meets multifamily requirements. Another PD condition being requested is to allow for balconies to project five feet into the required front yard along Sanders Loop. So, in terms of the building elevations, the material board shows a variety of materials and colors proposed for the building. I believe they're right there on the side. Thank you. There are two brick colors proposed, one light, one dark. In addition, there is cementous board and batten, cementous panels and siding, as well as cementous wood tone siding. The roof will be a standing seam metal roof and metal for the balcony areas. The materials will be used in different sections and articulations. There are no signs submitted with this development, and any proposed signage will need to meet city requirements. So, the covered parking will have a standing seam metal roof, and the pillars will have some brick accentuations. So, with the 120 different units, the room breakdown is 72 one-bedroom units, approximately 700 square feet in size, and 48 two-bedroom units with a minimum 900 square feet, which will be accessed from an air-conditioned interior corridor. There are two elevators proposed, and at Planning and Zoning Commission, the consultant indicated that they would provide those emergency generators for the elevators. All the units will have granite countertops and stainless steel appliances. They are proposing a clubhouse slash lounge area, 2,200 square feet, a fitness room, 2,000 square feet, a multipurpose room for games and crafts, 1,100 square feet, a mail package area, 500 square feet, and a leasing welcome area of 1,200 square feet, all on the ground floor. And that's indicated in the purple on the left-hand side of the screen. Staff did recommend that they provide an additional area, open area of 500 square feet on each, on each floor for the residents to gather. So, in the revision, they did provide that. You'll see on the upper floor units, the image on the right. And in order to maintain the 120-unit count, they are requesting that three units be slightly smaller than the six, than the 700 square feet at 620. So, they did note that in their narrative that they had a bistro bar, but it's not labeled on the floor plan. Exterior amenities proposed include a dog area outlined in green, a shade structure with a barbecue grill outlined in red, a butterfly garden, a fire pit, two sport game areas for games like bocce ball and cornhole. So, those are all indicated with some colors on the plan. They did note some concierge services during business hours. So, this image here, what we're looking at, so the third floor of the complex is proposed to be in line with the train tracks, the Dart Silver Line. There's approximately 82 feet separation from the building to the Dart property. So, at this part, at this location, the Dart line is elevated, and it would be about level with the third floor. So, the following information was taken from Dart. Dart anticipates weekly service for the Silver Line to be from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. However, it's possible that the service hours could be as early as 5:00 a.m. or as late as 11:00 p.m. Silver Line will run every 60 minutes during peak hours, sorry, and during peak hours such as weekday commute times, it will run every 30 minutes. This line should be in operation in late 2025 to mid 2026. The train lines are under construction, and the tracks are elevated in this particular section, measuring from the ground to the bottom beam of the track approximately 19 feet, about another seven feet of support, and then another additional three feet to the handrail of the tracks. This lines up with the third floor of the proposed complex. Staff added a condition that if this building is constructed, then mitigation of the train noise and any potential vibration from the tracks be factored into the construction. This would include the windows and all other construction material. Noise should not be greater than 55 decibels on the interior of the building. And this aerial here is just to kind of show you in relation to what's surrounding it. So, the land is in yellow, the building's in blue. To the west, sorry, to the west, you have light industrial office warehouse buildings. To the north, you have some commercial businesses, an automotive business, a little taco place. And then on the other side of the proposed tracks, you've got a little retail center and a gas station. To the south, you have Chase Bank, and then to the east is actually the city of Dallas or Cypress Waters, and the CISD owns a couple of properties adjacent to this. So, when we looked at the landscaping for this location, the site meets the minimum requirements with approximately 40% of the site landscaped. The majority of this, though, is the atmosphere gas easement, which is outlined in the green down below, with only 17% outside of that gas easement. They are proposing 65 over-story trees and an additional 20 accent trees. So, the 2030 master plan calls for this area to be mixed-use community center or single-family residential with a maximum density of 10 dwelling units per acre. The area was to be mixed-use, consisting of both neighborhood and community-serving commercial, retail, and office uses, or medium-density, single-family urban residential with commercial services and transit services accessible within a short walking distance. This area is currently served by office warehouse buildings to the west, Cypress Waters to the east, Bank to the south, and the new Dart Silver Line passenger rail abutting the northern boundary. Part of this request is to amend the future land use plan for this site to urban residential neighborhood, which allows for the higher-density residential uses that serves the needs of the residents seeking alternatives to low- and medium-density, single-family, and detached housing. The idea was that to have a mix of housing with the majority being owner-occupied and not all rentals. So, again, this is a zone change request. We did send out notices, seven within 200 feet as required by state law, an additional nine courtesy notices within 800 feet. We received one response from the automotive location directly adjacent to the site, and one additional within 800 feet. So, the applicant did provide approximately 74, 75 petitions, and on the, it's a generic petition, so they had letters that stated, "We support the rezone to accommodate the proposed 120-unit Lake Breeze Adult Living Community, age 55-plus, planned at Beltline Road and Sanders Loop. There is a shortage of housing, particularly for older, older residents. The proposed development is of high quality and will help retain our aging Capel residents, keep them close to family," end quote. So, eight of them were from non-residents of Capel, and additional six were shoppers from Tom Thumb, and additional 10 from business addresses. So, staff is not aware of what was presented to these people who signed this pre-made form. So staff is not aware of what was presented to these people who signed this pre-made form. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this request, three to two, with the following PD conditions. One, that there may be additional comments during the building permit and detailed engineering review. Two, to require the installation of a southbound left-turn D cell lane on Beltline Road at the existing median opening serving this site. Three, the building elevations be approved as presented, however, building must be, must provide for noise attenuation. Four, that no greater than 55 decibels inside the building. Five, that sight lighting shall meet all City of Capel requirements. Six, to allow for one parking space per unit plus one per five guest parking. Seven, to allow for parking as shown on the plans. Eight, to allow for four-story and a density of 20 units per acre. Nine, to allow a five-foot balcony projection to the front yard along Sanders Loop. Ten, to provide additional 500-square-foot lounge area on each upper floor. Eleven, to amend the future land use plan to urban residential neighborhood. Twelve, to clarify the hours for the concierge service. And then we added some additional ones at P&amp;Z, to add a decorative fence with the stone brick columns at every 30 feet on the northern property line where it abuts the industrial and commercial properties and the Silver Line. Fourteen, to add an emergency generator to the site, as stated by the consultant or agreed to by the consultant at Planning and Zoning Commission. Fifteen, that the minimum 700-square-foot one-bedroom units and 900-square-foot two-bedroom units, and to allow for one 620-square-foot room on each floor to maintain the 120-unit And sixteen, to require a noise study. So that is the end of my presentation. The applicant is here as well, and they do have a presentation to give you as well.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Boswell? Is the applicant is here?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, counsel, my name is Maxwell Fisher with Zone Dev 2502 Grandview Drive, Richardson, Texas 75080, representing DFW Land. We're excited to present to you something that we think makes sense to better align the zoning with actual market and the challenges of this property. Originally, in the future land use map, it called for mixed-use, and there was a range of uses, which was a little bit confusing on what was actually planned for here, but my understanding was is sort of a mixed-use commercial center via commercial block basically from Beltline all the way down to the Chase Bank. But a couple of things that have happened. One, we get the Dart, we have the Dart line running through the blue line to the north. Well, that cuts up the site from being a cohesive commercial development. And two, we have a one-acre Amis gas easement that has to remain grass, and that cuts basically part of our Beltline frontage. So it's already sort of an inferior retail site based on the shape, but with that additional Amis easement, it's even that much more difficult as well. So we think a residential infill development will better serve and support the limited retail that is there and maybe get some improvement. There's some, this is the retail at Beltline and Beltline. It's partially vacant, so the retail that is even has better visibility and better access struggles. And so we think, you know, we haven't, you know, hasn't been, haven't had a great offer on any sort of retail or commercial type. And on top of that, you know, there's a huge demand for age-restricted housing as, you know, baby boomers, basically, there's 10,000 baby boomers turning 65 daily. And, you know, people who are wanting to move out of the home, they look for socialization, security, low maintenance. And so, you know, we're offering that with this development, and that frees up housing for younger families in Capel. It's a four-story building, as mentioned by staff, 120 units, about 28 units per acre. It will be all one- and two-bedroom. It'll be all seniors, so you're going to have a lower impact from a traffic standpoint and just an occupancy standpoint. We'll have two full access points. There'll be a left-hand turn that will serve the development heading southbound on Beltline into the site. Amenities and offerings, we'll have two elevators, 50% covered parking, fitness center, games and crafts room, dog park, two flex courts. I'll go over some of the amenities in detail here in a moment. Oh, Mayor, if I, could I go a little extra? If you don't mind, I'll quickly go through, but if I could have a little more than five minutes, I'd be grateful, if that's okay.
You're actually not limited.
Oh, okay. Well, I won't abuse that. The clubhouse is up front.
Please don't.
Okay, sure thing. Clubhouse is up front. You can see, we're happy to answer any questions there. We have an inviting front entrance. What we've tried to do is because we do have the gas easement on the south side, some of our exterior amenities have been sort of programmed on the south side, so we could take advantage of that area, that grass area. The easement's basically just going to be a grass lawn, so we want to put our amenities right on the periphery of that, so people who, the residents will enjoy that space. It'll feel like a bigger yard, because we can't use it really for anything else. We're hoping to put some chairs and things out there, but we can't put anything, any permanent structures based on Amis and dealing with Amis. These are just some pictures of what represents of what we'd like to build in terms of the quality and the aesthetics of the development. Here's some exterior amenities. We'd have a dog park. We'd have a outdoor fire pit, and we're going to put a, basically, a water wall on one side to provide some ambiance on our north patio as well. Rose Sines is here. She's our senior, our senior living operations specialist. She's in the industry every day. She's an expert on all types of senior living, and she's here today to answer any questions that I can't answer as a zoning guy. She definitely has more expertise in the industry of senior living, but this facility will have a whole wellness coordinator, personal fitness trainer that we'll be partnering with. And so there'll be a concierge service this Monday through Friday, even on Saturdays for, as we start sort of lease up and get the development going, so we can build these programs and keep them going. I mentioned a lot of the amenities already. I'll be happy to go back to this, to this slide if need be. Living units, there'll be high-quality stainless steel products. Senior living, as opposed to apartments, generates more income because there's more services typically, special services. And the more you get towards, this is, this is like the first step out of, into the senior living. So there's active living, and then as you move closer to assisted and then memory care, it gets more expensive as there's more care needed. So this is totally, totally active as opposed to a more assisted living facility. Here's a landscape plan. I'll be happy to go back to that. We're well, you know, meeting the code. On the building elevations, it's, we hired GHP as a really well-known architecture firm. We think it's well, well-done with the mixture of materials that have been passed around. It's well-articulated, both vertically and horizontally. There's the materials there. This is an actual 3D rendering of the site as you're heading in on the entrance of Beltline. We think it creates a nice little cozy residential community that, on a very challenging property that's sort of isolated from the rest of your single-family and other developments. Both your plans, your 3030 plan and 3040 plan scream for additional senior living housing, and so we think we're meeting those needs. There's a need for retired people who are wanting to downsize, but they want to stay close to their family and not have to move into another community. This gives them another option for doing that. Your 2040 plan, I kind of felt like our proposal was created, and then the 2040 plan was written after it, just because with goal four, it basically says, "Looking for small-scale developments on the fringe of commercial and retail that can reiterate some commercial areas with senior retiring housing." And I felt like this is a case in point for that goal. This property, being vacant and not being commercially viable so far, in addition to being an ag exemption, it's produced $6.89 in taxes every year with the senior living development. We're looking at about 550,000 in taxes to the various entities, and that will include almost 130,000 to city and city taxes. There's a myth about retail, you know, a lot of people say, "Oh, you're here all the time," that you're changing the zoning away from retail, away from commercial. We're losing our retail sales tax. Well, there's a retail sales myth. If you look at the ad valorem property value of a lot of retail buildings, it's just a box. It's not worth very much if you look at the land and the building. What drives it is having a very large, high retail sales tax. Just for instance, Hard Ate Barbecue, which since, it's a, you know, a restaurant that probably, I don't know what it does, let's say it does a million, million, half, two million a year in revenue on a large parcel, just the parcel and building alone is only about $44,000 in taxes for the city every year. To make up for that, to compensate for what our building and development's going to cost, it would be 20, it would have to do $27 million in revenue to get, to take 2% of that for the city's benefit, and that would be like 20 restaurants. So that shows you the value from a tax-based standpoint of something that's purpose-built like this versus just a retail box. Cotton Beltline, Dart Line, their staff mentioned some concern about the sound. We actually talked with Dart since the P&amp;Z meeting and got more information, and Dart was, had a lot more information than we thought. You know, we're 140, our building's actually 145 feet away on the northern section and 358 feet away in the southern section. We're fine. We're looking at higher-rated windows if need be, but based on what we've talked with Dart, John Hoppy, basically, he says, "At this location, there are no nearby at-grade crossings, so there will be no noise generated by a train horn or crossing," which makes, that's usually the big, the big noise that you would hear. And since the crossing or the stop is so far east, it's well removed from our site. And then there's a sound study that was done, and because the train speed is only about 35 miles an hour, it helps that the station isn't too far away, because trains are slowing down or just speeding up. So they're not going 50, over 50 mile an hour or more, looks like even 79 mile an hour at certain locations, based on where we are. So we're actually kind of in a sweet spot. We're not too close to the station, but we're not near, we're out in the middle of nowhere where the train's just zipping by at 80 mile an hour. I think there was a condition in the, that said that we needed to have a decibel level of 55 or less. Based on what Dart provided, the decibel level near the station outside would be about 55. So we're 145 feet away indoors. We won't even be near that number. And just, there are several examples, as you know, in Carrollton where there's properties that are near the Dart station that are not adjacent to the station, but closer to the actual rail itself. There's a, we did get quite a bit of support from the community, both residences and businesses. I think at the end, it says there's 80, there's about 75 letters of support that we'd happy to go over. But we would ask that you approve this request. It's a challenging, big parcel. We think it's a great residential infill and will support some of the struggling retail around there and maybe get some of the smaller retail to redevelop. It provides much-needed housing with a Class A product, and we would ask that you support this request or approve it to, and that it aligns with the comp plan, and city staff supports it, and so did P&amp;Z, and we have about 75 letters of support. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And then, as I mentioned, Rose Sines is here as well to answer any questions or if she wants to add anything, if the mayor, mayor's okay with that.
I'm just here if you have any questions.
Counsel, have any questions? We actually have a section that will come up later when the council will be discussing, so stay tuned. We may have questions for you at that time.
There's one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. So can you tell me how you ensure that you'll have 55-plus residents living there?
Sure. So understanding the Capel Code doesn't have a land use designation for senior living. In the plan development, there'd be an age restriction of 55, but then operationally, we will, we will not rent anyone under 55. That will be a requirement, and Rose can probably talk about how, the vetting process of how that works when your, when your prospective residents are.
Sure. It's in the lease agreements that they must meet the age.
Okay, and when you sell the property, how do we, how are we assured that that's going to, policy's going to be maintained?
A few, a few different ways. One, the plan development ordinance will still have, be age-restricted, so we wouldn't be able to lease it. We'd be violating the city regulations. But two, we get a higher dollar amount for senior living versus an apartment. So by its very nature, we would, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be something that someone would want to do. It would devalue the property going to an apartment. Two, it's also going to be built to where it's going to be catered to seniors, where there's going to be a senior program that's part of the, part of the development. And so, I mean, properties change hands all the time, but you'd still have to, of course, adhere to the city's zoning regulations, which in this case will be age-restricted. Plus, there's no three-bedroom units, so it's not really designed for families. It's small one- and two-bedroom units, 700 square feet, which is typical for a senior living development. So it's not really set up for a family, for a multifamily. We're not designing it that way, and it really doesn't work that way for the future.
Okay, and any regulations about how long visitors who are children can come stay?
Yeah, there's usually, I'll let Rose answer that one. Go ahead.
Sure. Great question, because it does come up.
I know.
Yeah. Typically, in lease agreements that we have in seniors' housing, we'll put all the restrictions for the environment that they must adhere to. Do not typically allow for overnight guests. Many times, we'll have a guest room, which the smaller unit on each floor is, could easily become a guest room that we would offer if they want to have somebody stay over. But we usually have that in the agreement. It's really restricted, and it doesn't allow for a family to move in, let's say, an adult child with them that's younger than 55.
But that's not in the PD? That's only in your rental policy?
Yes, it's traditional in our rental policies.
Which could go away when the property is sold in a year.
I wouldn't be able to answer that. It's a little bit, I guess, in a sense speculative. But traditionally, in seniors' housing, exchange that I have seen over my 20-plus years working in the industry is it goes, a developer that's interested in a property that's developed as seniors' housing typically stays seniors' housing, because they are designed that way for that and to attract that.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Thank you. Stay tuned. We'll be back in touch with you in just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public hearing. And persons wishing to speak during the public hearing must sign the register and list your address. You will be called to speak in the order that you have registered. Public hearings are limited to five minutes per speaker. We did have four people sign up to speak tonight, and the first one on the list is Mr. Eli Dragon.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel.
Procedurally, could you state your name and address?
I'm heading that direction. My name is Eli Dragon, 727 Bentree Court, Capel, Texas 75019. I'm also the owner and occupant of 779 West Main Street in Old Town, Capel. I own and operate, half for 35 years, a financial planning firm that's called Main Street Retirement Planning. And the one thing, I knew nothing about this tonight, I'm not really here to talk about that, but I thought I would support them, because we have 1,200 households that we service out of our office. Our average age is probably 65. So I've been doing this a long time, working with seniors. And one of the things that's really needed is a 55 and older community. I can't tell you how many clients that I send to Ropes and Ranch, to Frisco Lakes, to Fairview. And, you know, this reminds me of, is, you know, I've been in the community now for over 25 years. It reminds me of when we didn't have a cemetery. And for those that may remember that, we did not need a cemetery at that time. We were a transient community. What was our community? People would come in here, close to the airport, mid-level management, work three, five, seven years, and then move on. And I can remember your predecessor, I think it was Billy Fott, that got out here and spoke on it and said, "You know what? We like to live in Capel, and there's many of us that would like to die in Capel." So we are proud owners of 16 plots out here at the cemetery, by the way. So anyways, the idea is, I think this is sort of a need in the community. I'll leave it up to you guys to decide how and what it looks like, whether it's this site or another site, but I do think it's a nice 55 and older community. It is an active, what I saw before the meeting tonight. So I just want to say that it's something that's something that's needed in our community, and I would support some type of development for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The second person signed up to speak is Mr. Chris Collins.
We're back again. Chris Collins, 217 Glenwood, Capel, Texas. Most of you know me through the last two developments we've been through. So that's where I'm coming from, both as a realtor, developer, and taking care of adult parents in their late 80s. When it came my turn to make these decisions for my parents, when they left the farm, the farm we had in Burleson, there was nothing in our local community for them as active seniors to live on their own. They were still driving, going to the grocery store, driving themselves to doctor's offices. The closest we could get them was Frisco. From there, we've ended up, went to an assisted living, and we're now at Evante in Flower Mound. So I've seen both of those products brought and interviewed and looked at several more, looked at several that are close to our community. And none of them had the high standard that I was looking for, for my parents to live in. When I saw this brought up during the P&amp;Z, I immediately thought, as a realtor, I know we're struggling with the aging community staying in Capel, who are wanting to stay here. We're seeing a lot of young families wanting to come back to Capel, but there's not a place for them. I believe that this particular project, as I saw it and then reviewed it after the P&amp;Z, would give us an opportunity to give a high standard, like he said, a Class A apartment for our seniors that want to stay in Capel before they progress to the cemetery. But it also will free up those houses for the younger that are looking to move in. As for the site location, there was quite a bit of discussion about that. As a real estate agent, we've looked at this site twice for development in the last couple of years. And we just couldn't come up with something that, the number track, traffic count, the things that were done during the Capel town meeting about Old Town, we just couldn't figure the mass would be there, the critical mass would be there. It's an odd-shaped lot. It does have some geographic, geographically undesirable things to develop around, such as the easement. They're making good use of that for a lawn. I can't think of a better place to start a higher-density project in Capel than a budding, the Cypress Waters project. So if, as, as we see Capel develop in the future, I think that we're gonna, we've talked about density on both of the projects that I've bought before you guys. And if we're going to have a higher-density product, which this is, in Capel, what better place than at the corner of Beltline and Beltline? There we're tying in with the higher density that you're seeing as you drive up Beltline on the right-hand side, industrial on the left. Like I said, I can't imagine another location in Capel that is available for sale to be developed that could fit this project. I think they've done a phenomenal job on putting this together. So I'm definitely in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The third person signed up to speak tonight is Rose, and I think it's Sines.
Hi.
Oh, okay. Thank you. The fourth person that signed up to speak is Kimberly Grubbs.
Good afternoon. Kimberly Grubbs, 841 Woodmore Drive, Capel, Texas, 75019. I've lived in Capel since 1984. I went to Lee Elementary before it was New Tech High School. I went to CMS East at Capel High School and then left for college. I came back in 2018 when my dad had to downsize and move out of the house that I grew up in. I said, I want it. I want it. Please sell it to me. I want to move back to Capel. I want to live here forever. And I think you do, too. The Vision 2040 Plan mentions that you expect Capel to be a community for a lifetime. That's the goal that we're working for. My dad had to move to an independent living community, a 55 and up community, much like the one we're talking about today. And I had a lot of conversations with him about what he expected to see in that type of community, what he wanted to meet his needs as he was aging. My concern about the proposal here is that it doesn't offer a lot of the amenities that some of the other larger independent living communities in DFW offer. Some of those things are a commercial kitchen. As people are aging, they are not as into cooking as maybe they were when they were younger. That's something my dad needs a lot of. That's something I expect I'll need some, I'll need help with as I age. And if there's no commercial kitchen, that means all of the people living here are stuck doordashing or driving to get food or having to cook for themselves. And if that's not something they're able to do, if there's no commercial kitchen, they've got no other option. There was mentioned a multipurpose activity room. That's great. But if there's no activity director to make sure that people are, that is coordinating those activities, what are the odds people are going to be taking advantage of it and, and doing things with each other and meeting together and really communing with each other? There are also, I didn't hear any plans for transportation. That's often offered at these other 55 and up independent living communities to go to doctors, to go to the grocery store, to go get their hair done, to go do things in the community that they need to get done, that maybe they can't do when they're not able to drive as well anymore. Another thing I noticed was missing was storage space and garage. These apartments are going to be much smaller than a lot of the houses that people are in in Capel. A lot of the houses here are 2,000 to 3,000 square feet. It's going to be really hard to downsize to 700 to 900 square feet. Not impossible, but difficult. And without garages or storage areas, I'm wondering where the precious memories and mementos and things like that are going to go. The biggest concern to me that I would have living in a place like this is the noise from the Dart train. I know we've heard it's only going to be 55 decibels. I don't really know what that means, what that translates to in terms of sound and how loud that is. But even if it's not that loud and it's dampened, if we hear it every hour, that's going to be really obnoxious. I wouldn't want to live that close to a train personally. I think this idea in theory is great. I think this proposal misses the mark in some areas. And so for that reason, I'm a little hesitant to be fully on board. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Grubbs was the last person signed up to speak. So we're back to the council for discussion. Counsel, do you have any questions or any questions to ask or comments to make? Counselor Member Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could address the applicants, please. Thank you, guys, for coming back up. Come on down. All right. So obviously, our last speaker brought up several things. And some of those were actually on my list to discuss. I just want to make sure we had opportunities. So would you mind addressing some of the issues? So obviously, the commercial kitchen, to me, is, is kind of a concern. So could you speak to that a little bit about your proposal?
Yeah. So, and I'll let Rose address this in a moment. But there's a difference between active living and an independent senior living. And this is active living. So it doesn't have a full kitchen. But we do have, we will have a director, that, a senior director that, that Rose can speak to, that will be on-site. There'll be a full-time position for, for the senior program. So that we will have the director. As far as like the Dart rail, I mean, there's all kinds of apartments all over, all of the Dart, Dart system, all over DFW. And so I think that the information provided by Dart was pretty compelling. I don't know that there'd be any noise issues. And we've, of course, we would address that with any sort of upgraded window. That's where the noise would come in if it, you know, where it need to be. We're happy to do that with a noise study if, if need be. Do you want to address the director?
Sorry. I'm a little short.
You can tilt that down. You're good.
Okay. Yeah, I think it was a great discussion. And I appreciate that you were sharing, or the person was sharing the information, because there is some confusion in the industry in general about what is included in seniors' housing and what can be covered. So this project specifically is active adult. And it's not necessarily new to have 55-plus communities, which have normally been built as like a community of small homes or town homes and maybe had a clubhouse, that kind of a thing. But it is fairly new to build them like this, the way that we're looking at now in the industry. And it's come out of demand from, it's come out of demand mostly from a boomer population that is more open to moving into this type of environment and not have as much responsibilities in the past. But it is very different than an independent living that then transitions to assisted living, which is regulated, and then into memory care services. And the more that you progress in senior, seniors' housing, the more services that you acquire. And also the price, of course, goes up as well because of the services that are included with all that. So when you get into independent living, that's when you have, you know, full kitchens and you have the meal services that are provided. Typically, you purchase, like within your purchase agreement, two meals per day, or you can even go more than that. A lot of times, people will then also have transportation services. Majority of independent living has transportation services available for those that are no longer driving. That is not the population that, that's being targeted in active living. 55-plus are still very active adults. I'm not far from it myself. You know, I'd be happy to move into a community where I don't have to do the lawn, that kind of thing. And I still want to work. I still want to be able to be on boards and participate in things and be active, but yet socialize with other individuals around that community during my part-time availability. So the, this property itself is a little unique in that it will have a full-time wellness, whole wellness coordinator is what we call that, because it focuses on the whole wellness of the person, not just physical health. But it will have social engagements and activities throughout the week that are coordinated and planned. And many of the residents themselves may lead themselves, educational-type things and so forth, planned outings, things like that, that they may want to do. The concierge specifically that we have designed in this is to help individuals that need some maybe help trying to coordinate with some other outside services that they might want to pull in. And that's why we have a concierge that will have access to be able to obtain things that they want to get that maybe they just need some guidance on. So I hope I answered your, or any questions on that.
If I could also address the two other items. So P&amp;Z or the staff recommended that we have these upper-story common areas, about 500 square feet. And so we, we don't, we weren't proposing that, but we did add it as it was requested. What we could do, and the reason being is we would like to keep our, all of our activities on the first floor. So that way, it kind of creates synergy and critical mass. Everybody knows where to go. However, what we can do is we could convert one or two of those of the three to additional storage space that could be rented out. We're going to have large walk-in closets. But if, if someone has, you know, wants additional storage space, then we can take one of those and that could be a storage area that residents could rent if there's concern with that. The other thing is, is I think it, there's been some comparison to some of the like continuum care facilities that are very large campuses that have tons of amenities. We feel like the amenities in the program here fits to this, this smaller-scale development. So it's not apples to apples, and you're comparing to a facility that has all three, you know, active living, assisted, and memory care, or two of the three, and a large campus over several acres. As, as mentioned by Rose, this is a different type of facility. I think I addressed everything. Maybe I missed one. I don't know. We could probably, I don't know if we discussed transportation as far as, you know, providing transportation. We could definitely look into that. You know, a lot of time, people that are 55, 65 typically would use Uber or some ride-sharing. However, we could look at maybe having something on-site if that was something the council would just insist on. But it's, I don't know that we've discussed those exact details at this stage.
One more thought. So, you know, we have a thriving senior community at our senior center here in town. Has there been any talk or discussion or coordination with the senior center, like, and what that relationship might look like?
I, I hear yes in the background. It would definitely be something that would be in collaboration on, for this property development. We would absolutely be involved in that because most of the residents that would reside there would probably be volunteering and active in the community at large.
Would, would the, would the, I mean, you said y'all really hadn't discussed transportation before. I mean, obviously, there's some distance between the proposed project that you guys have and the senior center. There's no, I don't think it's feasible for a 55-plus to be able to walk that. It doesn't seem, I'm sure you guys are aware where it is?
So the, I want to address kind of the average age of an active adult living is around the early 70s. It's not what we see in independent living, which is the average age is now in their 80s. And in assisted living is now up to 84. So it's a, it's a younger population still vibrant. The concierge service, though, can assist with somebody who maybe isn't driving and needs transportation, if they want to help them to coordinate Ubers or, or some drive support. They can, they can help them with that, which is kind of the point of having a concierge for that, meals, whatever, housekeeping services they may want, things like that.
Okay.
Crystal's with, with.
Hi. I'm Crystal Fertile. I work for Mr. Bora at DFW Land. And I went around the community and collected the 70-some-odd letters of support from residents and local business owners, myself personally. So I can attest that I've visited the senior center on more than one occasion and had great feedback from the people there, playing the games. You know, went through a booklet, this lady has back here, you know, displaying what was going to be offered as far as games, activities. And we had, like I say, great support from, from them as well. So just wanted to add that in.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Member Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. 72 one-bedrooms and 48 two-bedrooms. How much would be the rent?
Rent would be from, what, 1,400 to 2,200, one- and two-bedroom range.
Okay. You just stated that average ages are going to be 70s, right?
That's nationwide is the average age in active adult.
Any specific study in Dallas, Fort Worth, or Metro plus here?
I don't personally have that study. I went through the National Investment Center. The Dallas-Fort Worth area is the largest population in the nation for active adult.
So there is a need here for older age or, or early 70s folks to, you know, downsize to. And of course, 2040, you both mentioned, 2040 and 2030, there is a need for that as well. My question for you is to follow up on Counselor Member Mark Hill's question. 55-plus, let's say, early or average age is 70, they have an adult child, 35, have kids living with them. How do you restrict those adult child not live there?
The way we, we do it in the agreement that we have, the lease agreement, is that the person who lives there must be 55 or older. And that's their agreement in order to be able to move into the property. They're not allowed to move somebody else in there, just like in, I guess, if you went into a multifamily property, you couldn't have multiple people living there that weren't on the lease agreements.
Do you have a similar project anywhere near DFW?
Not, this is, we're actually be partnering with, with a developer, a senior living developer. So not, not one for this particular operator or this developer. But Rose works on many, you know, that's what she does every day and has worked with every, every type.
Yeah. You being a consultant, do you know any other properties in and around Capel, Farmers Branch?
Sure. There is, Haven at Lewisville is the closest 55-plus active adult community in the area that is around the same square footage and around a close approximate price point as well.
Okay. Thank you.
There's some property value, or rental rates ranges in the three that are near, near the area.
Counselor Member Hina Jose Smith.
Thank you. Okay, so for clarification, so this would be Lake Breeze, this would be the first of something like this that this group is putting together, right?
Right.
Okay. And then you mentioned working with a developer on senior living, but you also call this adult. I think that's where I'm getting confused with the terminology because this isn't a senior living, right?
Well.
This is an adult living. And yet, we're doing a 55-plus, but the average is 70. And I'm trying to think of what's the highest and best use for this piece of land, knowing that we also have a need for some type of housing for our aging community, but making sure they have the right amenities. And is this the right location for it? So you're confusing me with the senior living, the active living, the 55, the 70. I, I need clarity because otherwise, I'm not in support of this at all.
Okay. And my apologies on the language. It does get muddied in our world and gets mixed up. And so it kind of rolls off the tongue for me that way. tongue for me that way. Seniors housing in general is the, the larger term that we use in the industry. And the reason we use seniors housing as the main one is because the residents do reside there in that environment. And that can range from no services, minimal services for 55-plus, and that's what the industry now has defined with the National Investment Center for Seniors Housing as defined it as active adult living. That product is, is really for an independent individual. Then you go into these in, living environments that start to add on services as the individual starts to need it, and then so does the price because of the cost of the services that follows that along. So if you were to look at a large campus community, as we talked about before, you might find cottages on that campus along the side, and then you might find an independent living tower, and then it's tied to an assisted living, and then a memory care, and even in some cases, a skilled nursing environment as well. And those are called continuum of care retirement communities. So I, apologies for the confusion with it all, but this particular project is just taking that one piece of the very beginning of seniors housing, which is active living 55-plus.
Gotcha. That's helpful. Thank you. I just, I wanted to understand, what's the demographic that we're targeting, per se, and then figuring out, is this the highest and best use for this particular piece of land? And then, you know, I, I struggle with the fact that it's so close to the DART, right, and rail. And so, you know, I think that's where I would, I would love some
Yeah.
Further understanding of how we soundproof something like this.
Well, I don't.
I don't know what the wording is. I don't want to put words in your mouth. I'm just saying.
Yeah. Well, there, I mean, there, I think from DART, the director has stated that there's not going to be a sound issue here, because we're so far from where the, the actual noise is coming from. There's apartments all over the DART, like I said, DART system. There were issues there, they, you know, they would put in higher-rated windows, and we're happy to do that on, on that north side if need be. I don't know that it's necessary, but there's also a hike and bike trail that's proposed along under the DART, so our residents can enjoy using, you know, walking on that trail. When you say the highest and best use, what, what could go here? We've owned the property for 10 years. If, if we could have sold it to a retail commercial development, that would have happened. This is the highest and best use. I mean, I can sit here and say that. I don't know what else could go here with all the challenges that are, that are presented earlier. So I think, I think it's good for that area. It's kind of a, a bit of an awkward area. But it's also, you know, it's, it's, it is medium or high-density, depending on how you, how you look at it. But you're obviously, you're not going to approve medium-high-density in the middle of your single-family neighborhoods to the north. This is sort of like hangs down from the city, it's sort of isolated. If, if not here, then I, then where would you approve something of a higher density? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. So I think this is a great site for, for this. I think this site sits here vacant for, for several more years if, if this isn't approved, given, given the challenges that I mentioned, mid-block, odd shape, and the utility and dart rail cutting through what was planned to be a larger commercial block, so. Yeah.
Councilmember Walker, I haven't seen you raise your hand, but I haven't ignored you, have I?
I did have one question for Mary Peron Boswell, if I could.
Well, we're, we're, you're muted again.
Now, I'm off mute.
Jim, we'll have to get back to you.
I hope he said he was in support. I don't know what he said, but.
Our IT team is working on it, so just give it a second. Can you try again, Jim?
Yes, does this work?
Gotcha.
Okay. I had a question for Mary Peron Boswell, if we could ask her to please come back to the podium.
Sure. She will be there in about three seconds.
Okay, so remind me, what was the, what was the normal parking requirement for this space, and what is the parking requirement that P&amp;Z approved?
Sure. So typically, it's two spaces per unit plus half-space for guest parking. What was approved was one per unit plus one per five for guest spaces. So a ratio of 1.22 roughly. So where, they typically would have had to provide 300 spaces, they're providing 147.
Okay. And that's in the context of independent living housing that, to facilitate that independent lifestyle, would require that they have cars. It, it seems to me that the reduction of the parking spaces for, is just renders this a less-than-desirable use, particularly for the demographic that they're targeting. You know, I mean, and, and the idea that they're going to be, you know, using Uber Eats or Uber for transportation, if the only price point they can afford is the, you know, these small units, that doesn't seem realistic either. So I have some very serious concerns about this particular use within the context of what they've had to do to try to make it even remotely viable. It, it seems like they're, we're definitely at cross purposes there. That's all I had, Mary. I, I really appreciate you as always.
Thank you. Council, any other comments, questions? Councilmember Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess to the rest of the council, this is sort of my thoughts, I guess, at this point. I do think this is a very problematic piece of property. Dart coming through has made it more problematic, quite frankly. It hasn't been developed in a long time. I struggle with really what will work. There's some good points being brought up about retail hasn't worked, commercial hasn't developed there. But going along with what Jim is saying, I do, I do have a little bit of issue with the density. Ultimately, this, this doesn't solve our aging population problem, I don't think, ultimately. It is an apartment complex that will be focused on older individuals, but I don't think it really addresses our longer-term issue. So it's really, in my mind, just an apartment complex that's going to be on this piece of property, and it feels like it's being shoehorned in a little bit. My thought initially would be, if we didn't have quite the density for the amount of space that's there, I mean, even talking about the parking, even if you went just two spots per unit, that's about 70 units, not 120 units. So I feel like it's just putting, you're not going to have, maybe you're going to have 60-year-olds there, but you're going to have a lot of them right there in that small piece of property, right there on Belt Line. It doesn't feel like the right answer. I don't know that I know what the right answer is for that property. That is a concern of mine, because I don't know what it's going to get developed into later on, because nothing has, the market hasn't brought anything to this point, and that is a concern for me. But I, I do think it's more dense than I am comfortable with at this location. So those are my thoughts at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one more question for Mary. This number eight shows 28 units per acre. Is that what they are requesting? And, and the previous slide I saw 40 units per.
So it is 28 units per acre. If you take it at the 4.4 acres of property that they do have, there's that one big section of the atmospherement which is non-developable, which is an acre.
Okay. Oh, I see.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. So the, the density is 28 units per acre.
Okay. And one acre is not developable, that's why.
Correct.
Okay. I got it. So it's, okay.
Not seeing any discussion or comments. This is a public hearing. I will accept a motion.
Can you go back one slide? Thank you.
Counsel, I'll, I'm open to accepting a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing and approve item nine with conditions.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Seeing no second, the motion fails, and the item is... Bob?
So we make a motion, either approve it or deny it, and I'll figure out what's voted.
Because we've got the, we've got a public hearing.
You've got to make a decision.
Yes.
Otherwise, it's going to come back the next meeting.
And, and that's what I was trying to, oh, sorry.
You, you can move to close the public hearing and do it next time, or you can move to close the public hearing. I always ask you, make an affirmative motion, so it's easier to figure out, because if it doesn't.
That's what Rihanna was doing.
That's what I was trying to do.
She was making.
So I just need someone to second.
Mayor, I'll second.
All right, so.
Second.
Can you make your motion again, please?
Yes. I move to close the public hearing and approve item nine with conditions.
Thank you. And I have a second from Councilmember Neves. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor?
Walker, Hina Jose Smith, Carol, Neves, Matthew Hill in favor, opposed. The motion fails.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number 10 is, is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and ask Ms. Boswell to read the item into the record. I, this is consider approval of, of a zoning change request from PD 311-LI Plan Development 311 Light Industrial to PD 311RLI Plan Development 311 Revised Light Industrial to allow an overhead tank line from the accessory tank farm structure to the existing office warehouse on approximately eight acres on a portion of Lot 3R1 Block 8 located at 508 Wrangler Drive.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. This item is AstraZeneca, which is a pharmaceutical company located on Wrangler Drive. In September of this year, AstraZeneca brought forth a request to construct a tank farm structure on this site that would allow them to expand their production to meet increasing demand for their Locoma drug that is only manufactured at this facility, and an approximate 3,000-square-foot building addition for Phase II. The council approved the addition of a tank farm for the site with lines going underground from the tank farm to the main building. Since this was approved, they have started detailed construction engineering and are now requesting a change in the method of moving the chemicals from the tank farm to the building. So the original plan showed the lines for the chemicals to go underground from the tank farm to the adjacent building. What they're now requesting is to allow the chemicals to travel in an above-ground pipe rack that will take the materials from the tank farm to the building. No other substantive changes to the site plan are proposed. The tank farm is here in blue. The overhead pipe rack would be here, and the pipe rack would be located towards the back half of the site, approximately 517 feet from Wrangler Drive, and painted to match the building. The columns would also be in the landscaped areas, which provides further segregation and protection from the parking lot traffic flow. So the pipe rack is proposed to be seven feet, nine inches tall, 12 and a half, roughly 12 and a half feet wide, and elevated so the bottom portion of the rack would be approximately 23 feet from the ground, approximately 10 feet higher than the top of an 18-wheeler. Traditionally, the, the tankers wouldn't be going under this pipe rack. This is just to kind of show you the dimensions of, of, in case they did have to go in that So the proposed pipe rack system would be exterior to the building. The enclosure would span between the tank farm and the existing building. The top of the pipe rack would be installed between the parapet line and the tank farm building roof line to not add additional elevation to the tank farm design. The enclosure shall have removable panels to allow for maintenance and inspection access to the enclosed components, so piping, heating, instrumentation, leak detection, et cetera. So this is just kind of some renderings to kind of show you what it would look like, and be located in the landscape islands with some additional protection around it. So the original PD condition for the parking would remain, nothing really changes there. And the overhead pipe rack system would be installed, as you can see, in the landscape island with ballers in place to, to allow separation from the parking area. So this rendering, if you look at the very back, you can see the pipe rack system. So that's just kind of illustrate, it would be about 517 feet from Wrangler Drive. So a benefit of the pipe rack system versus the underground lines is the accessibility to do maintenance, inspections and repairs if necessary, versus the underground pipe vault, which would need to be enclosed, sealed, and would require sections of the parking lot to be dug up if they needed to access the underground pipe vault. And this would be more disruptive to the overall operation of the site. So the pipe rack system would be wind load-rated, designed for a wind rating of 120 miles per hour. It would have a leak detection system. The enclosure would include a leak detection system, automation controls for safety, shutdown if low flow or leaks are detective, detected, and the pipe racks would be labeled for low clearance maximum height signs. Piping would be double-contained and fully welded with minimal mechanical joints. So again, this is just another kind of rendering. So again, this is a zoning change request. We did mail out notices, seven within 200 feet, an additional four courtesy notices within 800, 800 feet. We received one undecided response from CISD. I think they just, to say that they got it. There was no comment on it. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval with the following conditions. There may be additional comments during detailed engineering review, and to paint the pipe rack to match the building. That is the end of my presentation, and the applicant is here as well to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does the applicant have any comments to make?
I think she covered it pretty well, as usual. Alan Hager with DPR Construction, representing the, the firm that will be building. Alan Hager with DPR Construction, representing the firm that will be building the facility. And then Jeremy Doyle here, who operates the facility.
Hello again, Jared Doyle with AstraZeneca, 508 Wrangler. Just, I think first and foremost, I would like to apologize for returning so soon with the design change after you already supported us and gave your approval in September for the site expansion. But I would like to give a little background and history why we were changing the design. So when we started designing the site expansion, we started working with the landlord and property owner in 2021, and we presented both options, the pipe vault as well as the pipe rack. So the underground pipe vault and the overhead pipe rack. Now admittedly, when we presented those designs, they were in the primitive stage. And what we presented for the pipe rack honestly wasn't something, admittedly, that the landlord and property owner could support because it wasn't appealing from aesthetics perspective. But now that we've gotten the more detailed design, and while we were meeting with you for approval for a site expansion, we were doing samples of the soil and stuff in the area, and the quality of the soil is so poor, that added to the complexity of the pipe vault, and it made the design where it was more difficult, where we had to do a full enclosure, where it made it very difficult from operability, maintainability perspective. So that's why we worked with the engineering firms that we partnered with and came up with a better design for the pipe rack. And when we presented that to the landlord and property owner, this new design that you guys see in the renderings, they actually ended up liking that better. It kind of brings the buildings together, has a better appearance, and from that perspective, they liked it. So that's how kind of the progression of how we got here today, and we're already asking for this design change. But it's a better, the industry standard is to do a pipe rack like we're proposing here. The only reason we even considered that pipe vault in the beginning is we really thought that was going to be the preferred solution for the property owner. But now we're here today, we came up with a better design that they like.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
We had nobody, this is a public hearing, we had nobody signed up to speak. So that will take the comments back to the council. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Councilmember, I saw, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, AstraZeneca manufactures this drug, it's going to help people worldwide, and we should do nothing to encumber its production. And if anybody is ready to make a motion or accept one, I'm ready to make one.
Will, can I put you on hold just a second for that? Because Councilmember Walker has a question or comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question for the applicant, if we could.
Yes, sir.
And this is probably not an issue, but with respect to overhead transported chemicals like this, I don't see any reference to any federal or state regulations governing the construction or the onsite monitoring or like that. Is there any such thing?
So we partner with the engineering design firms, and they, the experts in the Texas commissioning, and we meet all the regulations. The materials we're transferring are corrosive materials, and we have all the engineering and safety controls to prevent any leaks or detect leaks if they were to happen. So we meet all the requirements for that.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's what I wanted to hear.
Councilmember Neville's?
No, I was just going to share with the council. So in a previous life, I used to work in the petroleum industry and where overhead pipe racks were quite common on that. I just wanted to share that normally what you see out in the field is exposed pipe racks, very, you know, not the most appealing, if you will. I just wanted to say I appreciate the level of detail that you guys are bringing to this to, you know, not only make it easier and more functional with the soil, as you spoke to, but just that aesthetic really does bring the buildings together. So I appreciate you guys taking that to the next level and bringing us something that I do think that we would be comfortable with approving, so at least for me personally. So thank you guys for doing that, and it looks really good, and happy to support you guys.
All right, now to Councilmember Hill.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and approve item 11.
10.
10, sorry.
With conditions?
Couple glasses.
With conditions?
Yes, with conditions.
And seconded by Council Matthew. All in favor?
Walker, Hina, Hostess, Smith, Carroll, Neville's, Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you so much for your continued support. Thank you very much. Okay, item number 11 is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and ask Mr. Steer to read that into the record.
Mayor, council, good evening. This is item number 11 this evening. It's a public hearing to consider approval of PD 250 R2, or R26R-H. Old Town Main Street is only change request from PD 250 R26H to PD 250 R26R-H to allow for a 775 square foot ice cream shop and 2,359 square feet of speculative restaurant uses on approximately 0.25 acres of property located at 767 West Main Street at the request of Diana Ahmad. The planned development for the 10,215 square foot two-story mixed-use building with retail on the first floor and two residential units on the second floor was approved in August of 2022. The construction of the shell building is nearing completion. Because this was originally approved with speculative retail on the first floor and because restaurant uses have a greater intensity than what was originally proposed, it requires council action and cannot be administratively approved. A detailed floor plan has been submitted for the 775 square foot Mr. Henry's Ice Cream Shop. The floor plan indicates indoor and outdoor seating for 14. This is a new concept from New Zealand that involves mixing fresh fruit and ice cream. It's available for dine-in or carry-out. And the proposed hours of operation for Mr. Henry's Ice Cream Shop are Sunday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., then Friday and Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The speculative restaurant is 2,359 square feet, and the hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Friday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And the speculative restaurant floor plan is unknown. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the noise of deliveries was a concern. The commission added a condition to the approval that no delivery shall be made between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. because of the residential adjacency. A brick dumpster enclosure was proposed to be located on the southwest corner of the lot. It indicated that the brick would match the building, and a solid metal gate would match the color of the brick. And because the proposed change in use causes the need for the dumpster, staff had originally recommended the enclosure to be set back from the south side lot line, the same distance as the main structure. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the dumpster location was discussed in great detail, and ultimately, they recommended it to be located in the middle of the lot, abutting the alleyway. After the meeting, staff met with the applicant on-site to discuss the recommended location. And the recommended area, turns out, it has conflicts with a gas line as well as a new grease trap location, making it difficult for the enclosure in this area. Therefore, the applicant is proposing to locate the enclosure near the originally proposed location on the south side. And the applicant has met with a representative from Republic and determined that the appropriate angle of the enclosure for pickup. The enclosure will be angled to the north as the truck will travel southbound on the alleyway. The front corner of the enclosure is proposed to be set back 7.5 feet from the southern property line, and the rear corner will be set back two feet. The parking associated with restaurant use is one parking space per 100 square feet, as opposed to one parking space per 200 square feet for the already approved retail use. The parking analysis for the area has been updated to reflect the zoning that was approved on the property on the southwest corner of Main Street and Bethel and the increased parking needed for this development for restaurant users. And it turns out there is adequate parking in the overall Main Street Old Town development. It shows 1,200, or 1,022 required, and they're proposing 1,045 parking spaces. Here are the renderings of the previously approved plan. The dumpster enclosure will be required to match the brick of the building with a solid metal gate, painted to match. And the sign package includes a hanging neon ice cream cone sign at the north end, and this fits in with the unique signage allowed in the area. A can Mr. Henry's sign was proposed facing the square. Although a panel sign is acceptable in Old Town, a backlit can sign was not. So staff had discussions with the applicant and now understands that the can sign will be redesigned to be an opaque aluminum and not be internally illuminated, but will have exterior arm lights shining down on the sign. And it's recommended that the Director of Community Development have the authority to approve the signage for the speculative restaurant. And this is included as a condition of approval. 19 notices were sent out within 200 feet, and we received zero letters in favor and two in opposition. The property owner to the south was concerned about the proposed dumpster location. The property owner at 736 Hammond was concerned about the hours of operation, recommended 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. consistent for both restaurants. Was concerned about delivery hours, recommended 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., deliveries not be allowed. Wanted to minimize the visibility of the trash compactor or the trash receptacle and stated that rodents could be an issue. They prefer no bar or majority liquor sales, and they wanted to match the family-friendly neighborhood. They were concerned about the number of vehicles and the traffic and their kids playing in the alleyway on bicycles. We sent out 126 additional courtesy notices and did not receive any responses to those. Ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. Let me go back. So we did have one additional concern that was raised at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting by another concerned citizen within the 200 feet, although he did not return a letter in opposition. And he was concerned about the delivery hours. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval unanimously of this request, subject to the following conditions. One, that the dumpster enclosure be located in the middle of the lot, adjacent to the alley. A grease trap installed sufficiently sized to accommodate both restaurant users. Redesign the Mr. Henry's can sign to an externally illuminated white aluminum panel. Final signage designed for the speculative restaurant shall be allowed to be approved administratively by the Director of Community Development. And finally, they added, no delivery shall be made between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. And because the applicant has met with Republic Services and because there are potential utility conflicts with the middle dumpster location, staff recommends dropping the condition related to the dumpster enclosure location and recommends approving it as shown. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is in the audience as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything to bring forth? You don't have to.
I mean, he pretty much covered it. I mean, you know, just the clearance for the Atmos valve tapout or whatnot, and the clearance for that.
All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. We did have three people signed up to speak tonight. You will be called in the order that you signed up, and public hearings are limited to five minutes per speaker. The first person that signed up is Ms. Ann Dragon.
Ann Dragon, I live at 727 Bent Tree Court here in Capella, and we own and operate a family business at 779 West Main, which is directly next door. When this was originally zoned, it was zoned for retail residential, and we supported that use. Now here, less than a year later, we're coming back and we're requesting a change for residential restaurants. And as a result of that planning and zoning change, it requires additional permanent structures. Unfortunately, when this was built, it has kind of maxed out the full use of the lot, the property, for the retail residential. So when they came back in and they found that they had, they basically presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the dumpster location, which happened to be right on the property line, where the doors would be like swinging and open onto our property. It was discussed in great detail, and they, I'm kind of losing my spot here. And basically, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously came back and said, in order to not harm the properties next to it, in order to avoid, you know, the odors when it's 110 degrees, the rodents, in order to keep that dumpster closest to the door on the back, in order to make it so that it was not visible from the front of the building, so that when you're at the park, you're at the farmer's market, you're at the concert, that you're not looking into a dumpster that's like on the side yard there, that it would be placed behind. Now, what I did is I went around and I took photos, and I'd like to give these to our city secretary to share with you. So I'll just start speaking here. So these are basically photos that show the existing dumpsters that are in the Main Street Capella HOA. And there are no dumpsters in our HOA, no walls, fences, or permanent structures that are outside the building line. They are all placed behind the building structures. So by relocating this along the side yard, you are making a change that does not support our DCRs. And I've talked to Matt about this, and I understand that you guys, you know, don't enforce the DCRs. But this is not the intent or the vision for Old Town. I sat on the Planning and Zoning Commission 20 years ago when we were doing the master plan for Old Town, and never did we envision something like this happening. So what I'm saying here is we've spent a lot of time, a lot of effort. I know it's been very frustrating for the applicant. It's been very frustrating for all the property owners near it. But the bottom line is, is that this property, because it has already been built, is not suitable for restaurant use. And therefore, I ask you to deny this request in hold. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The second person that signed up to speak this evening is Mr. Chris Collins.
Chris Collins again, 217 Glenwood Drive, Capella, Texas. As you know, we've done a couple of developments in the Old Town area. Some of, a lot of resistance that we had met. When this project first came through with the restaurant, it seemed to be something, as we've discussed in previous developments, restaurants work. However, in this situation, the dumpster, when we have had to bring our projects, the dumpsters were always inside the building line, out of sight, tucked away in a corner, landscaped around. My concern would be when it was approved originally in P&amp;Z that the dumpster was intentionally moved to that location. Being on the development side, we've had to move things. We've had things come up during construction that weren't expected that we had to reinvent or find a workaround for. In this case, I believe that the applicant should have to come up with something with the engineering on the underground utilities, et cetera, to keep the dumpster out of sight and to minimize the visibility, the odors, the serviceability of the dumpster. But that's just where I'm coming from as someone that's working in that area. I believe there could be a solution. It may not be economic, as I've seen before, or it may be a little more costly. or it may be a little more costly, but there should be a solution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The third speaker is Eli Dragon.
Okay, Eli Dragon, 727 Bentree Court. And this is why I came tonight. So anyways, I am the owner occupant of 779 West Main Street. And I think it's important to understand who we are. And I'll sort of, I did this by writing it down. And I wrote this down as, we do occupy 779 West Main Street. Now, I use the word "we" because we have 10 employees that work at this location every day. We have seven of these employees who are Capel residents. We have a, we live here and we pay taxes here. And those seven employees have a combined over 200 years of living here. We have owned and occupied offices here in Capel. This is in our first office, for over 25 years, including our present building for over six. We've been members of the Chamber of Commerce for over 25 years. We are Capel. My office is Capel. We work here, we shop here, we eat here, we live here in Capel. The reason I'm not in favor of this zoning change isn't because of the restaurant. When this thing was originally approved, we were fully aware, as you could imagine, with my wife sitting on planning and zoning, she's all over the stuff. So anyways, when this thing came up, we were in support of it. I'm like, you know what? Retail, and I'll, by the way, and I'll just go back a little history. The reason Old Town, this is my own belief, is the way it is, is actually because of my wife and I. Way back in the day, we were walking through Pentwater, Michigan. She's working with Gary Sieb on the plan development. We're walking through Pentwater, Michigan, and we're sitting there going, wouldn't this look lovely in the old Carter Crowley soccer fields? And we took a bunch of pictures and we brought them back to Gary and said, this is the concept that we should adapt. And believe it or not, that's what we have today. Old Town is what it was up in Pentwater, Michigan, 20, 25 years ago. So the reason is, is because of this dumpster is the primary location, the primary reason. When you have it in the center, once again, after planning and zoning, we came back from planning and zoning, we can support it. We are here to support the expansion of Capel. We like to eat downtown. We have all of our coupons in our office. We went around to everybody and said, can you give us 10% off so that when our clients come in and see us, they can eat here in Capel? So we are Capel. So the reason that is, is really what it comes down to it for me is the dumpster. Let me tell you a little bit about the dumpster. We've been there for six and a half years. When, there are a lot of rodents in that area. Remember, it used to be the Carter Crowley soccer fields. When the art center was built, boy, did we find out, because it was one of the last places. We had to hire a professional exterminator to put in, to get rid of all the mice that chew through our irrigation. So there are, will be rodents. When it is 110 degrees or 100 degrees and that dumpster is sitting that close, that is where we drive into every day. Now, I know it's going to be smelly. When I look at that back door and how far they have to drag their trash in order to get over that dumpster, that's going to be a mess there. And I know there's going to be flies and rodents and everything that are going to be there. You know, we've already, as a, as a company, we've, or as property owners, we've already been harmed because of that construction. We've had our utility cap that's been cracked, shut off our internet. Our driveway's now been cracked. And we have pictures of all this and we'll deal with this later on. But the last thing I want to do is be harmed again by having that dumpster that's so close. And then when you look at it, hopefully, if you can go back and look at that picture, look at the site. Remember where we put the concerts right there in the corner? That's what you're looking at. You're going to be looking at that dumpster. So that is why I'm opposed to it. And I'm just going to, I'm going to close and just say this. You know, there was a gentleman who, if you guys ever read the book, Good to Great, or How the Body Fall by Jim Collins. He writes in there that if you have to spend a long time on making a decision, you already know what the decision was. This is what happened with NASA when the astronauts got killed. They, they were around trying to decide, could they launch it or not? They already knew the answer because they talked so much about it. And because planning and zoning moved it over there, we're okay with it. And now that we're back here again because of it, and we're talking about it further and further, I think the answer is, we know the answer. The answer is no. Do not put the dumpster next to somebody who's an owner occupied, who has clients that come in every single day. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms., come forward and give your name and address and...
Hello. My name's Diana Ahmad. I live at 137 Kingsridge Drive, Capel, Texas, 75019. You know, a couple of points. I, I am also a resident of Capel. My daughter goes to Capel High School. She's on varsity tennis. We're a part of the community as well. We care very much about Capel. As of right now, in three years, my daughter's going to be graduating. And we actually will probably end up being owner occupied. And since we'll be living potentially upstairs in one of these units. We are bringing two, so this building, we're bringing two units for two Capel families. And we have, potentially have up to three businesses that will be coming into this, you know, property. The first time we had our first meeting, actually, the very first city meeting, we actually mentioned that potentially we would want to have pizza, ice cream restaurants in the building. But at the time, we didn't have any idea who the tenants would be. It was a year ago. And as we listed the, you know, property on LoopNet, a lot of restaurants have, you know, come to us and, you know, are very interested to come. Myself, knowing a lot of people in Old Town Capel, everyone I knew was very excited about any food places, especially ice cream. And it's a new concept. It's kind of cool. So, you know, that was a little bit on that side. In terms of the location, someone had mentioned financially, we can move utilities and so forth. That's not the case here. I actually, it was not shown, but I did submit some images of where Atmos, they have put their gas tapout exactly in the middle of the spot where the city had recommended the dumpster to be. Okay. Okay, so the, the tapout where if Atmos needs to turn off emergency gas, you know, for my tenants, there's potentially five tenants going to be in my building, they have to access it right away and immediately. And they don't want anything within six feet to be built on it. So the parking spot that was, you know, chosen by the city obviously will not work because that's right on top of the tapout. Six-foot clearance means the two parking spots on both sides will not work as well. And if you tried to move the dumpster closer to the building, the electricity for TXU and so forth, where their panel is and how it runs diagonally through my lot on the top of the left parking spot, that spot cannot be used. And because the, for the grease trap, the location has to be eight feet away from the building to this parking spot to the right. That's where the grease trap is going, has to be eight feet away. The grease trap is 12 by six feet. So there's no way, safety, I mean, there's no way we would ever put a dumpster in the middle and cause any safety concern for any of our tenants. So what we did do, okay, one other thing. You know, Ms. Ann Dragon had mentioned that the dumpster locations in Old Town and so forth, you know, their locations. Well, Twisted Root Burger, which is across the street diagonally from us, they might not realize, the people here today, how far the entrances for Twisted Root Burger, and actually their dumpster is in the very south end corner of the parking lot of La Ventana. So the people who work at Twisted Root Burger actually have to go halfway down the entire Main Street to use their dumpster. The second restaurant in, in Old Town, Capel Deli, they're also right on their south border. So we have not, when, in the last meeting, we did not ask for anything that has not already been done by other restaurants in Capel. But because we want to go above and beyond to be a good neighbor to the Dragons, we said, you know what? Let's contact Republic Services, which I have done. And instead of their route going from south to north, so they'd be passing the Dragons' property before hours, and they had a concern that they would be, their lot might be utilized for the trash truck. I have contacted Republic Services, asked them to redo their route so it can come now southbound. It'll go from the dumpster at Tangerine Salon, coming down, southbound in the alley, turning, we've also, another thing we have done is turned and angled the dumpster away from the Dragons' property. So the trash truck will actually easily be able to go down the dumpster, down the alley. They don't even have to really turn in. They will pull up, the doors open, they take it, close, and then they can continue on their way and circle around to the alleys. So we have moved the dumpster off our property line, even though that should still be our right to put it there. We have moved it as a courtesy for Ann Dragon. And the other thing, my, from my understanding, the original intention of that area in Old Town was for retail and for restaurants. And I understand that there was an exception in the past and you guys made the exception to put office where Ann Dragon has her building. And I don't think offices is really what the, you know, Old Town, people really are looking for in Old Town. They want a place to walk around and so forth. The, as opposed, the comment was made about rodents. Well, I will tell you, I'm a very clean person. My property will be very clean. My tenants will be very clean. And that dumpster will be picked up frequently and the area will be cleaned. And I will have pest control done and so forth. But the idea of rodents in Capel, that's an issue everywhere in Capel. And if there's an issue that they're addressing with the food, I don't think we should have then a farmer's market and an open place where food is served right across the street and allow that if you're saying that there's an issue with this rodents that's so abundant. I don't think my property is going to be adding to the issue. And having the dumpster closed, property will be cleaned, so forth. And like for the ice cream place and so forth, they would not be going out from the middle back like someone had mentioned, oh, it'd be so close for them to go. No. Because there's no access to the back for where the ice cream shop would be. They would be coming around to the back. But, you know, we have, we are limited with the space we have on our land. But there is a great demand for restaurants in Capel. I mean, even being a resident of Capel, I would love to have more restaurants and so forth permitted to be in the area. And so, I mean, that's just a little, but I think I point, mentioned those certain things. So we weren't trying to be difficult not putting the dumpster in the middle. It's a safety concern. That's why it's not going there. Our options is to be in the corner. And that's actually where every restaurant is. Mostly in DFW, almost every restaurant is going to be in the back corner of their property. And when they were mentioning that you'll be seeing the dumpster...
You're coming up in five minutes.
Okay, okay. Sorry. The last part, they were saying that you'll see the dumpster from the back. You actually won't because there's an entrance for the apartments on the side. And we're actually going to have kind of like a side black panel on the side of the entrance. So you will not be able to actually, you won't be able to see the back of the property. And if, the only part you would be able to see in the back corner would be a little bit of brick. Because you're not going to see the actual dumpster anywhere towards the front. Sorry. I'm sorry. I know I went over and I do appreciate that you guys let me speak.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank...
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? I'm sorry, we can't really do that. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Jim, and by the way, I didn't, I also needed to acknowledge Mayor Proteam John, John has joined us as well via Zoom. Counselmember Walker.
I have just a couple of questions for Matt Steer. Hey, Matt. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, could you bring up the, the red ring of the back alley with the dumpster on the corner? Or in the middle, either one? Please? Okay, thanks. It's perfect. So the, the space between the diagonal lines in the parking is to provide access to the two garages that are there, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and so there's two, two-car garages that are, that are kind of inset inside the rear property line? Or the rear line of the structure?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the, the entrance to the residential is represented on either side of the garages by that stairway? On the north and south end of the building?
That's correct. Yeah. There's a stairway here and a stairway there.
Okay, so the, the little round symbol there, that's in the middle, the very middle of the rear part of the building, is that where the gas meter is located?
Right here. That's a access ladder to the, to the roof.
Okay, so what is it about the very middle of the building that makes it?
There's a...
Excuse, excuse me, Matt. Jim, I'm sorry. It just came to my attention that we are below the necessary quorum. So we need to put a pause on the meeting until Counselmember Matthew returns. We're going, we're going to recess the meeting for five minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Can I go to bathroom too? So ladies and gentlemen, just as an explanation, since we are, have two of our members by Zoom, we're required to have a quorum present in the council chambers to continue the meeting. At this point, we only have four members present, so we are recessed and for...
Yeah. And Mayor, just so you know, our charter requires five members of the council for a quorum, so that's why. But now he's back.
Oh, that's true. A quorum is five instead of the normal majority. Well, I did say five minutes, so, but I tell you what, we are going to reconvene the meeting. Mr. Steer?
Yes.
Continue on...
Refresh, refresh my memory. Okay.
I'm sorry.
So, so...
Jim Walker.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. So we were just talking about the, so you said the symbol, that round symbol is the roof access, the ladder. So what is it about the middle of the building back there that's, that deals with the gas meter or the gas line that's the problem?
So if you go about 20 feet to the west from that access ladder, then it, it puts the gas meter in the middle of that middle parking space or a little bit to the south, south side of that parking space. So they, they can't put the enclosure over the gas meter.
Is that the, where the gas meter of the other buildings is located?
That's where this gas meter is located. I'm not sure about the other buildings.
Did Atmos determine the location of the meter?
I'm, I'm not absolutely sure.
You're calling me out cold on this, Matt. I apologize for that, but... So the gas meter is actually in the middle of one of the three parking spaces?
Yeah, it's an in-ground meter, so it's, it's not above ground.
Okay, okay. So it's a below, it's a below ground meter?
Might be a valve.
Gotcha.
It's a valve, yeah.
So the, the meter is against the building, so that's, this is in the picture. This is, the meter is actually here. The gas line goes underground here. And that's the tapout for emergency when Atmos needs to get out, when they need to turn it off. And Atmos placed those there.
Yeah, I, I can pass this around if you'd like, so you can see the location. But I can't physically get it to...
Could you? Okay, that's all right, Matt. So the gas meter is tucked up against the building?
The gas meter is adjacent to the building and that's the gas valve or tap.
Right, okay.
That's, that's in the parking space.
Okay, so they couldn't set a dumpster on top of that or Atmos wouldn't have access to it?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And is there any requirement for location of dumpsters with respect to these Old Town buildings?
There's nothing specific in, in the zoning ordinance that relates to, you know, it just says that they shall be enclosed. it just says that they shall be enclosed.
I mean, okay, okay, well, thanks, Matt. I appreciate it as always, sir.
Actually, I printed off the refuse container requirements for the historic district. It says, "For institutional and commercial structures, refuse containers, dumpsters shall be located in the rear and screened from street view, with screening, fencing, and/or shrubbery."
Okay. So this dumpster would meet those requirements?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it as always.
Councilmember Neves.
I'm sure I should probably know this, but on the, I guess it would be the north side of the parking lot, there seems to be some sort of structure there, because there's only one parking space, like basically opposite of the dumpster?
Yes, that's a transformer.
Ah, thank you, appreciate it.
Just like there's a transformer next to the dumpster.
On the south side.
On the south side.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Question for you, where else can they put the dumpster?
You know, I'm, I'm not absolutely sure. They could, they could, well, they could put it on the north side.
Handle it just to be ready, it goes down.
Okay, so they, they could potentially put it here.
Where?
Up, up on the north, north side. I know they had concerns with, I'm hearing electricity through here. And then it's the entrance for the Kramers, right here, their, their residential unit.
Transfer over to that panel, which is the right on the wall.
So, so right here is, is where the Kramers would come in to, to get, get to their stairwell. So I think they were trying to avoid the residential as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. But if they put it on the north side in the same kind of angle, and you presume a, a south to north entrance by the Republic waste truck, it would be too close to the transformer, wouldn't it, Matt? And then it would also probably jut out into the access to the garage from the residential.
Yeah, it's, it's a, got a similar situation here. Yeah, if they, if they do it south, angled south, they would have to traverse over the driveway to get to it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Let's be careful that we're not trying to design the project for them. So, Counsel, Councilmember, you know, Hosses Smith.
Matt, um, maybe this is where I just need clarity. So, on the first condition, that is now struck out.
Yes.
Um, that is, okay, so dumpster enclosure shall be located in the middle of the adjacent alley. That is now struck out because-
Uh, well, so, so I went out on a site visit-
Right.
-after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And where they had recommended the dumpster enclosure be located conflicted with numerous utilities. So I, I wanted to present the fact that it was a Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, but then I recommended that it be struck because of the conflicts with the utilities, and this seemed to be the best location in staff's opinion.
Based on where it is currently, so there's no additional condition when it comes to the dumpster at this point?
Correct, because this is where they're proposing it.
That's where they're proposing it, okay. Um, I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out, like, are there, I don't even know how to ask this, like, are there other options that maybe we're missing, and I'm looking to you as the subject matter expert, that we might be missing that help, um, kind of accommodate people's concerns?
Right, so a shared dumpster agreement would be a solution. Now, I've, I've spoke with Diana, and she's tried to get in contact with Tangerine Salon.
Okay.
And see if they could do a shared dumpster. And so that's an existing dumpster. Of course, they'd have to bring the trash up there, but they have not returned her calls or gotten back in touch with her.
Gotcha, okay.
That could be an option.
That is an option, okay, thank you.
Counsel, could I offer a, an option here? We could table this to, for future consideration and investigate having the city enter into an economic development agreement to move the, the valve. That seems to be the, the stumbling block, the, the location of the valve.
The, uh, he's the project manager, can he just make a quick comment about, there's no way to move the valve, I mean, this is connected to five units, the, the gas meter, and with the plumbing, with the piping, with everything in place, and we're already been, I mean, we're ready, we're almost done with this project, there's no way that we can tear up all the ground to pull up the-
Well, you know, I was just offering something, and I'm, I don't know why you're turning me down.
I did, I did-
So, okay, we're, we're gonna move on.
Okay.
Councilmember, you know, Hosses Smith.
Well, I would be in favor of tabling this and there being, whether it's that or some conversation, to see whether there is anything that can be done. I don't, I don't know. I don't know what the answers are. I realize that something might be done, but I know that we've also had other situations around the community where, like, there's got, there's gotta be a happy medium, right? And there might be some costs, but there's, like, we want to set you up for success if this is going to go forward, and then there's, there, there could be other opportunities. So, I don't know. I, I would be in favor of tabling it to see if there's something they could work out with staff.
There's, there's, well, there's other options they can do, the joint dumpster with somebody else, there's many things that can actually happen. I think that we probably need to let the, the subject matter experts go work on it a bit. So we can table this to a date certain, continue the public hearing to, is it January 9th? Mike seems to know when it is. So I would be open to tabling, or to, okay. Councilmember Hill, I'll let you do it.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Huh?
Don't, don't close it.
Do you want to continue or close it?
I want to close it.
Okay.
Okay.
And approve item number-
Eleven.
Eleven, with conditions and as the dumpster is shown in the exhibit on the southern property line.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councilmember Matthew, any discussion? Councilmember Neves.
Clarification on the south property line, is that the existing proposal?
Yes.
Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify to make sure that, understand, so you're asking for approval, or approval in a second with the dumpster at the current location that's presented in, in the site plan drawings?
That's what I'm understanding.
Okay, perfect, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Matthew, Hill, opposed. Hannah Hosses Smith, Neves, the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
What, I got a question, and I don't know, because I don't, this is my first time attending these. If you didn't fully understand what was going on, would you voted on something?
Sir, we've, we've voted on it, and you're welcome to contact staff later, but we, we've got to move on on the agenda. Okay, item number 12 is consider approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the Sea of Capel by amending Sections 3-1-5 and 3-2-2, adjusting the monthly water rates, adjusting monthly sewer rates, and authorizing the mayor to sign. Mr. Young?
Well, before Jerry starts, just a real quick recap. As you know, we do an evaluation of our rates every year, our water and sewer rates, and through the past several years, different instances have occurred where we have not been raising our rates, though DWU, Dallas Water Utilities, and TRA, Trinity River Authority, have been raising their rates. The, these past several years, with the types of summers that we've been having, we have been pushing our 18.5 million gallon per day capacity, so much so that we have instituted various conservation measures. And that was really not driven by the, the fact that we could not deliver the water, it was being driven by the fact of trying to control our costs for our residents and our businesses related to the contract triggers, which if we were to go above 18.5 million, we would incur additional contract costs that would go forward, whether we used a penny more or a drop more for the next, I believe, five years. I believe that's the way the contract works, right, Kim? Isn't that right, five years? So this year, we took a look at our rate structure, and we said, and came to the council and talked about this, that, look, let's look at our rate structure from the perspective of, at 18.5 million gallons, even when we go in conservation for the last several years, and the, the community basically continued to use or press up against that 18.5 million gallons, even with the conservation measures in place. So what we did is we looked at our rate structure, and we said, okay, let's just go ahead and build in if we do bump the 18.5 at the million gallon range or at the additional 500,000 gallon range. So the rate structure that was presented to you several weeks ago back in November included that information, which was really weighted towards the big users, is primarily on the commercial side. So this evening, based on the input we received from you at the meeting in November, this evening, the rate structure that Jerry's going to be presenting is consistent with that presentation that evening. So, with that being said, and the understanding that the impact also was on us as a community from a parks and recreation side, we talked about, you know, whether it would cost for us to rehab the fields and everything, and we talked about, you know, it was roughly about $75,000 a year. And you take into account a half a million, uh, half a million, well, half a million gallons more from DWU would cost us about $160,000 a year, so the economic trade-off, right, was just, considering what the impact was that was happening on our users, we just felt it was prudent to go ahead and present a rate structure that anticipates us busting, if you will, that 18.5 million gallons. So that's what Jerry is going to be presenting this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Jerry Young, I am the Business Analyst within Strategic Financial Engagement. And tonight, we are seeking approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the city's Code of Ordinances regarding water sewer rates. For the agenda, we'll briefly introduce the Water Sewer Fund, and we'll talk about our consultant for the rate study, NewGen, who presented to you on November 14th. We will then provide an overview of the rate study, covering key cost drivers, rate design objectives, as well as a cost summary. We'll then view a comparison of the current rates versus the proposed rates, which will lead us into the impact of the new rates on bills, and then conclude with staff recommendation. So, before I begin, just as a reminder, the Water Sewer Fund is an enterprise fund, meaning that the revenue generated must cover the cost of providing the service. Cost of providing said service includes charges from Dallas Water Utility, who provide drinking water to the city, Trinity River Authority, who treats our sewer, and in addition, the revenue of the fund should account for the cost of maintaining water sewer infrastructure as well as any capital costs. The costs are covered by the revenue generated from the water sewer rates, which are approved by council. The Water Sewer Fund does not receive any funding from sales tax or property tax. So the rate study was conducted by NewGen, a management economic consultant firm. They have a nationwide presence with projects in over 33 states and even some American territories. Matthew Garrett leads the water practice for NewGen and partnered with Steve Duke to review the city of Capel's water sewer rates. These are the key cost drivers for NewGen when they develop their proposed rate structure. There are increases from both TRA and DWU as a cost of providing their service, and we're also accounting for maintaining the cost of water sewer infrastructure maintenance projects and capital improvement projects for the fund. And finally, the quality of life for the residents. During the past summer, we had to close fields. Thirty-plus days with high heat and no rain led to our fields becoming unplayable. The rate study took into consideration the need for more water to try and prevent the fields from closure in the future. For the rate design objectives, there were four components. Number one, we wanted to increase the commercial water sewer bills relative to the market. Our commercial customers tend to use more water for irrigation during our period of conservation, so we want to ensure that they're paying for that additional usage. Number two, we wanted to apply the DWU costs from seasonal peak needs to irrigation and high-volume residential usage rates to reflect the demand on the system. Meaning that if we must take the additional bump in MGD, the customers using more will ultimately pay more. And number three, we want to establish water sewer rates to satisfy the financial needs of the fund. Just as mentioned before, the Water Sewer Fund is an enterprise fund, so we must cover the cost of providing the full scope of the service. And finally, we wanted to maintain the 10% discount for senior and disabled customers. Now for the cost summary, let's begin by looking at the graph. The blue represents the cost of treated water, the green represents the cost of sewer treatment, and the gray represents the operations and, and maintenance. The purple is the debt service for the Water Sewer Fund, and the gold is the cash capital outlay. The dotted line is the projected revenue under the current rates for the next five years. A change is required to meet the cost of providing the service. The solid black line is the revenue needed to support or pay for all the items listed, which is where the proposed rates will get us. The cost of water and sewer account for 57% of the increase for the next five years. We have no control over the rates set by TRA and DWU, and since 2018, TRA and DWU have increased their costs, and the city has been able to absorb them. One of the guiding principles of the Water Sewer Fund is the customer experience. The aim is to implement items one at a time to allow customers the opportunity to adjust. The city has not increased rates since 2018, because in 2019, we implemented the advanced water meter system. In 2020, utility billing received new software, and in 2021, we implemented a tiered rate structure. And then we began work to have winter averaging implemented by 2023. The city can no longer absorb these costs. So the five-year projection shows that TRA will increase by 10.2% a year for the next five years, and DWU shows an increase in their demand rate by 2.5% and volume rate by 7.4% a year. These numbers came from the rate study, and they were based on historical data as well as trending. We'll be sure to review the rates annually and present them to the council to ensure we're meeting the revenue needs of the fund. Now taking a look at the current and proposed rates, I like to highlight that residential irrigation used to be a part of the commercial rate structure, and we're now moving it back to the- to the residential grouping. The average minimum charge is increasing by 2.5%. The volumetric charge will continue to include 1,000 gallons at no charge, and the next two tiers are increasing by 2.6%. The final tier is increasing by 64%, which is any usage above 25,000 gallons. I'd like to note that even during the summer months, most residential customers will fall into that 15,000 to 25,000 gallon range. Any usage above 25,000 gallons is where the stress is put on our system. The proposed domestic or indoor water usage for commercial charges include an increase on all minimum charges by 13%. The volumetric charge for commercial also includes 1,000 gallons at no charge. Anything above 1,000 gallons will see an increase by 13%. And these are the proposed rates for commercial irrigation, which show an increase of 13% across all base or minimum charges. The first volumetric tier of commercial includes 0 to 25,000 gallons, and the cost of this tier will increase by 13%. Any usage above the 25,000 gallons will be charged at $7.84, which is an increase of 64% from the current rates for that tier. Any usage above 25,000 gallons is where the stress is put on our system, especially during the summer months. The proposed sewer rates for residential customers show an increase of 8.5% across minimum charges, as well as 8.5% for the volumetric portion. The proposed sewer rates for commercial customers show an increase of 11.5% across the minimum charges and 11.5% for the volumetric portion. I'd also like to note that the difference in billing for these two categories is that residents are winter average, whereas commercial accounts are not. Next, I'll get into the impact on everyone's bill for the fiscal year '24. We'll look at various usage levels, beginning with residential. On the left is the bill impact during the winter months. When average consumption is 7,000 gallons, residents can expect to see an increase in their monthly bill by $4.65. On the right is the bill impact on average consumption throughout the year. When consumption is at 14,000 gallons, residents could expect to see an increase in their monthly bill by $4.61. Looking around at cities in the metroplex, you can see Capella is remaining in that lower third, even with the proposed rates. Other cities are assumed to be held constant, but in reality, there is a chance they are reevaluating their rates, just like we are. We already know of a neighboring city increasing their rates by about 5%. On the left is the bill impact during the summer months, when average consumption is at 26, I'm sorry, 20,000 gallons. Residents could expect to see an increase in their monthly bill by $5.19. This is due to increased usage, which affects the volumetric charge. On the right is the bill impact of high-usage customers. When consumption is at 40,000 gallons, residents could expect to see an increase in their monthly bill by $51.59. These are the customers that are putting the most stress on the system, so they will incur more of the cost. And looking around at the cities in the metroplex, you can see Capella is remaining in that lower third, even with the proposed rates, except for the high-usage customers, which is skewed a little more towards the middle by design. Transitioning to commercial, on the left is the bill impact of average domestic consumption for commercial. When consumption is at 65,000 gallons, commercial customers can expect to see an increase in their monthly bill by $55. On the right is a bill impact of average consumption for commercial irrigation. When consumption is at 72,000 gallons, commercial customers can expect to see an increase in their monthly bill by $162. Irrigation meters put the most stress on the system, which is why they're seeing an increase in their cost. So now I'd like to show you the percentage of customers that fall into each tier. On the left is a breakout showing where residential customers fall in each class on average. As mentioned before, the bulk of customers fall into that 1,000 to 15,000 gallon range, or 66%, meaning that they will incur the minimum charge plus fall into that first volume tier. On the right is a breakout showing where commercial customers fall in each class on average for domestic use. Same for them, the majority of customers fall into that 1,000 to 15,000 gallons of usage, or the 39%. In summary, residential customers can expect to see an increase on average by $4.61 a month. During the summer months, residential customers can anticipate an average increase in their bill by $5.19. The increased usage puts them in a higher tier during the summer months, which is why you see that their bill is slightly higher. Commercial customers' domestic bill on average will increase by $55 a month, and commercial customers' irrigation bill on average will increase by $162 a month. This showcases how the rate of the design, this showcases how the rate design of the structure was achieved by pushing the costs along to customer, to commercial customers and high-usage customers, all the while ensuring that the Water Sewer Fund will meet the revenue requirement needed. So with that, staff recommends approval of the proposed water sewer rates. If approved, we will begin communication to citizens within the coming weeks and up to February, which is when the new rates will begin. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I saw you practicing this earlier. What was the hardest question you prepared for?
Mayor, I, not at liberty to state.
I think I just got it. Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Jerry, could you go back to the bar graph with the, with the different items that are, the rates encompass?
For...
Like the very first bar graph you gave. It was just for like, that had the cash capital outlays.
Yes, cost summary.
There you go. So I think it'd be helpful if you just explained to all of us, you know, we have, we were, we were projected in '24 to be negative in the cash capital outlays, and then it kind of takes off. Explain for us, what, what does that pay for? What is a cash capital outlay in this context?
Let me, I want to make sure I'm understanding. You're asking, what does, what is the cash capital covering for the, for the future years, or just for fiscal year '24?
For, for, just for all the years, as a category. What is a cash capital outlay generally?
Okay, let me just one moment. So the cash capital outlay, it tends to cover the water sewer projects. So some of these projects would include the water system redundancy, things like the, the village pump station, as like the design and the construction for it, and each year, we allocate a certain amount for cash capital outlays.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. So the, that's representing major projects?
Yes.
And that's why it's distinct from the O and M costs, the operation and maintenance costs, because the routine maintenance has its own outlay, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And both of those are increasing over the period of time that's, that's depicted in this chart?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
I did have one question on this chart, and thanks to Jim for bringing it up. Is there any reason why the sewer costs are increasing at a greater rate than the water cost?
Well, I believe it's attributed to the projection. The 10.2% is going to be a, it's going to just be higher overall costs increasing than the cost of the water. So on average, TRA is going up about 10.2%, so.
Are they doing significant infrastructure improvement, or do we know?
I don't know exactly what they have going on. I do know that they do a five-year forecast and that they have a operation and maintenance, as well as an interest and sinking fund. So they are, they're issuing bonds, just similar to how we would for our infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Agenda Item 12 as presented.
Councilmember Carol Seconds, all in favor?
Walker, Hannah Hosea Smith, Carol Nevels, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is consider approval of a resolution casting a vote for the Board of Directors for the Dallas and Denton Central Appraisal Districts and authorizing the mayor to sign. Ms. Owens. See, I read that so fast, you didn't have time to get down there.
I don't think you want to see me fall. All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are, the agenda item before you is to consider approval of a resolution, casting a vote for the Board of Directors for the Dallas and Denton CAD. So as stated in work session, the CADs have submitted nominees to, for council to vote on their selections. Traditionally, this council has declined to vote in these matters, and the correspondence has been uploaded to your packets, so that includes candidate biographies, as well as the sample resolution, if council does choose to vote. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the process. Again, I would submit to you the biographies for your consideration. I'll stop now.
So as she said, we normally do not make a nomination, but I do need to ask, does anyone have a nomination for the Denton or Dallas County CADs? And you would do that by a motion? Well, seeing no motion before the council, item number 14 fails.
Thank you.
Item number 15, oh, I'm sorry, item number, that was item number 13. Item number 14 is consider approval of a resolution declaring a vacancy for City Council Place 5 and ordering a special election on May 4, 2024, to fill the unexpired term and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute a joint election agreement with Dallas and Denton Counties. Ms. Owens.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you just stated, I'm here to request approval of a resolution declaring a vacancy for City Council Place 5 and to order a special election on May 4 for the unexpired term. So Councilmember John Jun has filed as a candidate for another elected position in the state of Texas in the November 2024 election. The Texas Constitution requires that an elected official, who is serving a three-year term, resigns his position upon declaring or filing for another elected office. However, Councilmember John Jun will serve until his successor has been elected, as dictated by the city's charter. So now, City Council must declare a vacancy for Place 5 for the unexpired term and order a special election for the next uniform election date. The candidate filing period for the special election will also be the same for, will also be the same candidate filing period for the general election. And so that period will be January 17 to February 16 of 2024. And this is just a scheduling note, the timing of this lines up perfectly because we're ordering the special election before we're calling the general election. So that's why we're able to have perfect candidate filing periods. So I will come back to council at the second meeting in January to call the special election for the general election. But right now, this is strictly just to call the special election for May, May 4 of 2024. I'm happy to answer any questions.
In doing a little research, I found out that Texas is only one of five states that has the resigned-to-run rule. So I found that very interesting. Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Bob. So this is for three-year term elected officials. The day they declare for any other office, they are deemed resigned from the position.
Correct. On Article 11, Section 11 of the Texas Constitution, for any city or municipality that adopts a three-year term, that resigned-to-run provision exists. Also, a lot of cities in their home rule charters also have resigned-to-run. The city of DeSoto comes to mind, having represented them, have resigned-to-run. City of Duncanville has resigned-to-run, even though they have two-year terms.
And you had mentioned, we have these, in the event everyone decide...
Well, and the law in Texas is if you resign to run, if you're otherwise qualified for office, except for your candidacy, you would continue to serve until your successor's elected or appointed. The reason for the rule is it would keep, like a majority of our council, if they wanted to run for another office, then we couldn't meet and we couldn't transact business. So it's to promote the transaction of business. So in this case, Mr. John will be deemed to forfeit his office after the closing of the polls and you elect a, a new person to sit in his seat.
Thank you.
Councilmember John, did you have anything, or Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, would you, did you have anything to say?
Yes, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mike, City Manager Mike Land, everyone. I just want to say that the, I am sincerely grateful for the opportunity to have served for City of Capella, and in the capacity as a council member. You know, and I've said from the beginning that I wanted to try to advocate for the interest and concern of the community, and that's the same concept that I've, I've tried to stand by. And I hope that I made some difference, positive impact as a council member. But at the same time, you know, stepping down to serve at a next level, still, still hoping that I, you know, if I had the opportunity to still serve Capella, as well as the citizens of Capella, that's what it is. And I, I'm sincerely going to miss everyone. I'm, I'm, I'm already missing all of you guys. But I am honored, and I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity, and also looking forward to having the possibility of, of serving the community at the next level. So again, thank, thank, I just want to thank all of you guys for being such a great co-council members to work with, the city staff as well. I know that there were some times when, you know, things might not be so smooth, but at the same time, I, again, I hope at the end of the day that I made some difference, positive impact, not only, you know, to the city of Capella, but also to the residents of Capella as well.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. And John, thank you for sharing those words with us. We appreciate that. So with that being said, I'd like to move to approve Agenda Item 14, considering an approval of a resolution declaring a vacancy for City Council Place 5 and ordering a special election on May 4, 2020, to fill the unexpired term and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute a joint election agreement with Dallas and Denton Counties.
And we have a second by Councilmember Walker. All in favor?
Walker, Hannah Hosea Smith, Carol Nevels, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 15 is the city manager reports with project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session.
Mayor and council, just very quickly, Duck Pond Park improvements. The work continues. They're about 80% complete. South Beltline, the northbound lanes at Hackberry are going to be open within the next week or so. And then DART is continuing to work on installing tracks at Moore Road, and that is expected to be open by Christmas. Moore Road.
That's all?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Item number 16 is Mayor and Council reports on recent and upcoming events. I wanted to take a moment and thank our Community Experiences Department for the just fantastic tree lighting and drone show that we had last weekend. There were so many comments from the citizens that were watching the drone show of the oohs and ahs. It was really unbelievable. So, Mike, please tell Jessica... So Mike, please tell Jessica and her team, thank you, thank you very much, that that was a wonderful experience, and it was a complete surprise, so thank you. Come celebrate the holidays and sing along with the Capella Community Corral, which is going to be featuring the Capella Children's Chorus on Saturday, December sixteenth, starting at five PM at the Capella Arts Center. It's going to be fun for the whole family, and tickets can be purchased at capellaartscenter.org. Item number seventeen are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Do we have any, Councilmember Matthew?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that Capitol Historical Society and the museum is open and Monday through Friday, eleven AM to five PM. On Saturday, ten AM to one PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report that I had the opportunity actually to meet our former judge, Judge Primrose in Plano, and she, I asked, you know, she had a message she wanted me to deliver to the council, the city, as well as the city manager, and she has said that City of Capella has done really, really well preparing her for the next level. The only reason why she had left Capella is because she was looking for a full-time job, but she misses Capella, she appreciates everyone and the staff, everything that Capella has done for her, she sees Plano as a bigger Capella, but she, but what she can't, she always hold on to is the fact that everyone had given her support and embraced her as a judge in Capella, so she asked me to relate that to all of you and thank all of, all the council members, as well as Mike Lan and the, and the staff for the continued support she, that everyone has given while she was a judge here in Capella.
Thank you very much. That makes us all feel good when it comes from somebody like, like her that had so much time to spend in the, in the community with us. Last item on the public service announcements, on Saturday, I would like to thank members of the city council and our boards and commissions that went out and did the mayor's challenge to raise money for the Salvation Army. I don't, we don't have the amount that we raised yet, but we were put out to challenge some of the local cities, including Irving and I think Lewisville, so this is bragging rights for, for the fundraising. We had, we had a crew out there from ten AM to seven PM, and I really do appreciate everybody that volunteered their time, and the Salvation Army was very appreciative of our, our efforts as well. So thank you very much. Item number eighteen is necessary action from the executive session. I believe City Attorney Hager has something to say.
Yes, Mayor and council, as we explained in the executive session, City of Capella is a customer city to the City of Dallas. By virtue of that relationship, we're involved in a class action lawsuit, which, given the late hour, I'm not going to sit and go through that rendition again, but just enough to say that City of Dallas, as our water provider, asked for us to opt out along with them in this litigation. We honored that request. Since we had a very short window, I asked Mike to sign those documents so that we did not miss out on what our water provider wanted us to do, so I'm going to ask you tonight to ratify that. As I explained to you in executive session, we still have an opportunity to opt in if that's in the best interest of the City of Capella, but since our water provider, as explained by the finance department tonight, was, they provide us that water and do the treatment and suffer the cost to comply with the requirements in this lawsuit, that we opt out, so we did that. So with that brief explanation, I would entertain for your consideration a motion to ratify the execution of the opt-out documents by the city manager for the class action suit in settlement, cause number two, colon, twenty-three, CV three-two-three-zero, City of Camden versus Three M Corporation in two dash twenty-three, CV thirty-one forty-seven, RMG, and in the first case was DuPont, City of Camden versus DuPont. Thank you.
Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the item as stated by our city attorney.
Seconded by Councilmember Hinoza Smith, all in favor?
Walker, Hinoza Smith, Carol Neves, John, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. There being no further business before this, council, we are adjourned at ten twenty-seven.